The best place to work.
I love working here.
I feel very blessed.
I love it here.
I look forward to coming to work every day, being a part of this team.
Like a family away from home.
Where everyone feels like everybody knows their name.
A city that supports you. We see that with our benefits.
A pension, vacation days, job security.
Being able to be heard. We feel valued. We feel respected.
Lee Summit is a very progressive city.
It's growing. It's thriving.
We have this drive towards not just doing a job, but doing it with a spirit of excellence.
I had the opportunity to continue to grow regardless of 30-plus years doing this kind of work.
It's more than just dollars and cents.
We're here really to give back.
Providing a service to better a community.
To go out and serve people.
To be a part of something bigger than yourself. If I would have known what I know now, years ago, I would have been here much sooner.
Hello, Lee Summit. I'm Jordan. Here's your flash briefing for the week of October 20th. City Council will meet for a regular session Tuesday night at 6:00 in Council Chambers in City Hall. Meetings are open to the public or watch live on the city's YouTube channel. If you can't watch, catch the recorded meeting on demand on the YouTube channel or by subscribing to the Council debrief newsletter, which breaks down three to four key agenda items. Subscribe at cityofls.net. The public is invited to attend the Colburn Road ribbon cutting today at 10:00 a.m. This project not only added sidewalks, a multi-use path, lighting, more traffic lanes, and drainage and stormwater systems, but also reconstructed an entire bridge. Those attending the ceremony are encouraged to enter at the west end of Northwest Colburn Road, travel east through the roundabout at Northwest Blue Parkway, and park east of the railroad bridge. Green Street is hosting a free spooky family-friendly double feature on October 24th. The movies are Hocus Pocus and Nightmare Before Christmas. Doors open at 5:30 p.m. Bring your crew, grab your chairs, and get ready for a family fun night inside the Green Street Market. Whistlestop will be providing themed treats and drinks at the event. The city is looking for a learning and development specialist to help shape the growth and success of its team. In this role, you'll design and deliver training programs, identify skill-building opportunities, and support employees in reaching their full potential. Apply today at lspeople.net. Thanks for listening and have a great week.
Traditionally, we think as police officers, those responding to law enforcement needs within the community. But honestly, we are there to serve our citizens, and our citizens do go into crisis. They do have mental health crises, and we're being called to those scenes on a regular basis. In order to help serve those citizens better, we did initiate the Crisis Intervention Team Program. These are officers that are specially trained to de-escalate crisis situations. Recently, we've brought co-responders onto the scene, licensed qualified mental health professionals housed within our police department, and they respond with those officers directly to those scenes where a crisis is occurring so they can interact with that citizen and get them the help they need right there on that scene.
The co-responders are either a bachelor or master level in a behavioral health-related field. They wear plainclothes. They don't carry weapons or anything like that.
I have a police radio that I listen to all day, listen for, you know, those keywords, mental health, behavioral health, crisis.
There's a lot of officers that just call for me. I have my own radio number.
I also have the ability to self-dispatch to them when, say, 982, then route. Officers in route, 914.
So typically, I arrive after they've made it safe. I'll make contact and get kind of the rundown, and then I just kind of jump right in.
Like, hey, you know, my name's Allison. I'm a mental health professional. I'm here to help you. I'm not here to take you to jail or arrest you.
Sometimes, all a person needs is a voice, someone neutral, someone outside that, you know, can listen. I do a lot of safety planning, including family, their support network. Who's close to you? Can some, if they're home alone, who can come over and hang out with you today? Can we lock away your sharps? Can we put up your meds? Do you need meds? Can we get you over to the urgent care to get you assessed for your medications? Some of them also are like, oh, I'm so glad you came. This made me feel so much better.
Our main goal as co-responders is to, one, get people connected to the services that they need and also divert from emergency rooms and jails.
And they almost get a different view of the police responding. That lets me know you care and the officers care.
Lee Summit Police, how can we help you?
My husband has...
In 2020, we had 722 mental health-related calls for service. 2022, by that time, 1,479. These mental health-related calls for service are increasing. How we're responding to that is increasing the number of Crisis Intervention Team officers we have available, as well as the number of co-responders we have available to respond on these calls.
So what I think is important for the community to know about the co-responder program is that we're here, we exist. All you have to do when you call 911 is ask for us. You know, say, hey, I want a co-responder to respond to this crisis, and we'll go. I was really struggling about eight years ago, my personal journey with mental health, and I met some amazing social workers and amazing programs that have helped me get to where I am today. I really couldn't see myself doing anything else. We want to help, and that's what we love to do.
So I had a client, we got her call shots in suicidal ideations, and she really felt that she had nobody. And, you know, in getting to know her story, in getting to know who comes around and sees you, well, then we found a support person, and they responded immediately, and we made a plan. I called back and checked on her in an hour, and then I checked on her in two hours. We were able to get her into additional services to where she talks to someone every week or more. I just took a person that really just thought they had nobody, and nobody would show up for them and show them you do, and you'll be amazed who is in your corner if you just simply say, I need a little help.
Lee Summit has lots of local destinations, but where do you start? Green Street, a vibrant community space in the heart of downtown, is where Lee Summit comes together. Its three dynamic areas have something for everyone. Green Street Market is a modern event venue and home to the downtown Lee Summit Farmers Market. Green Street Lawn is a covered performance space hosting live music, family activities, and more. Green Street Grove is a mixture of gathering spaces, an immersive playground, and bold architectural features. And all three areas host community events year-round. So the next time you set out to enjoy the city you love, remember, meet at Green Street.
My parents built their first brand-new home in 1987 here in Lee Summit. It's pretty amazing to see what Lee Summit looked like in 1987 as a teenager. So vibrant. It was just growing, and there were a multitude of new things coming online. I was in the property management world, going to Rutgers College, and eventually, I raised my kids here. This community holds people. Every time you turn a corner, there's something new. 2013, there was a vacancy on the Planning Commission, and I thought, well, I'm going to give this a shot. When you're on the Planning Commission, the decisions that you're making are recommendations. Are they following our UDO? Does it fit in our comp and strat plan? When it gets to the council, that's the big decision. I served on the Planning Commission up until February of 2025.
I raise your right hand. I state your name.
I, Donald Funk. The first few weeks here was an eye-opener. These are big projects. We're making decisions for a lot of people. Is this the right project for our community? Does it fit? Does it serve the needs of our community? We can look back and see what's been done. I mean, it's incredible when you see Paragon Star coming out of the ground, Oldham Village starting to come online, Buhi Drive Athletic Facility, Discovery Park, and Streets of West Prior, 291 North and 50 Highway, our Farmers Market, the Green Street Project. You look at our downtown. My wife and I, we had the opportunity to visit a small town in Florida that was revamping their entire downtown. I met a guy, and he said, where are you from? And I said, Lee Summit, Missouri. And he's like, oh, my gosh, they're modeling our downtown off of what you guys have done. We're recognized nationally. I think the easiest way to put it is, we're moving in the right direction, a safe, vibrant, happy community. And my hope and my reason for doing this is because I want to keep that hope and dream moving forward.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Lee Summit Planning Commission meeting for Thursday, October 23rd, 2025. My name is Dana Arth, and I'm serving as the Planning Commission Chair. I want to thank you for taking the time to be with us this evening. The purpose of the public hearing is going to review, we're going to be reviewing and gathering input on the proposed developments that we have before us tonight. Our role as commissioners is to evaluate the proposal based upon the merits of the application. So I wanted to give you a little guidance about how the proceedings will go. First, the applicant will have an opportunity to speak and present the proposal, and after that, we will receive a staff presentation. Then when staff has finished, we will open the public hearing to hear comments from the members of the community. So I wanted to tell you that, and then I'll talk more about that when we get to that part of our meeting, because we need to start with a roll call for attendance, please.
Jake Lovelace.
Present.
Sherri Frazier. Ed Yarrington.
Present.
Terry Traptan.
Present.
Dana Arth.
Present.
Jessica Grenau.
Present.
Tanya Johnafford. Chip Tzatzinsky.
Present.
Randy Benbrook.
Present.
All right, thank you. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda, please?
Chair, I move to approve the agenda.
Okay, can we get a vote on that, please?
Jake Lovelace.
Yes.
Ed Yarrington.
Yes.
Terry Traptan.
Yes.
Dana Arth.
Yes.
Jessica Grenau.
Yes.
Chip Tzatzinsky.
Yes.
Randy Benbrook.
Yes.
All right. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Chair, I move to approve the consent agenda.
I second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Can we get a vote on this, too?
Jake Lovelace.
Yes.
Ed Yarrington.
Yes.
Terry Traptan.
Yes.
Dana Arth.
Yes.
Jessica Grenau.
Yes.
Chip Tzatzinsky.
Yes.
Randy Benbrook.
Yes.
Oh, thank you. Do we have any public comments tonight regarding the business of the Planning Commission outside of this application this evening? And I see none. If you would please come to the microphone and state your name and address for the record. Is it outside of the...
No, this is a public comment on the proposal tonight. Am I the only one?
Well, no, that's going to be at a different time. This is just for the Planning Commission meeting or business in general. You will get a chance, though. Okay. So as you all are aware, our item on the agenda tonight is Application PL 2025-098 Residential Preliminary Development Plan, Pathways at Kensington Farms, 1231 Southwest Waterloo Drive, Petra Development applicant. Would all of those planning to speak on behalf of this application please stand up and be sworn in at this time? That includes anybody who is planning to do public comments.
You promise to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing about the truth, so help you God.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a presentation from the applicant tonight?
Hi, guys.
Hello.
All right. Is this okay like this, or do I need to put this in presentation mode or anything?
It's fine with me. Just make sure to state your name and address for the record.
You got it. My name is Tyler Burks, Managing Director of Development for Petra, Wichita-based firm. So our office is in Wichita. All right, without further ado. So thank you, guys, for being here tonight. I really appreciate your time on a Thursday afternoon at 5:00 here. So I know that there's many other things that we could be doing, and I appreciate the staff as well, working with them. They've all been great to work with and have coached us up really well on how to present this and plan a great project for the city and the community. So thank you to the staff as well. So without further ado, Pathways at Kensington Farms, down in Lee Summit here, of course. So project team, Petra, of course, we're the developer. And then we have NSPJ Architects, and then McClure Engineering. NSPJ is performing the vertical and the site planning and landscape planning for the architecture for the site. And then McClure, as well as Merge Transportation, is the traffic study and the civil engineer. All right, and then further on, so as I stated earlier, Petra is a developer, operator out of Wichita, Kansas. We do have an office base here in Kansas City. Myself personally, I grew up here. I was actually, I grew up down the road in Belton, so I'm very familiar with the area. Actually, grew up going onto the lake of Rain Tree Lake back in the day, so had some fun on that lake. So very familiar with this area and used to run around here all the time. So we also have Ty on our team here. He's also from Kansas City, very familiar with the area. And then, so without expanding on that too further, we've closed and managed over $18 billion worth of real estate transactions. So this is what we do on a regular basis. We've done transactions all across the world. So the company was actually born out of Koch Industries. And then, so there's plenty of corporate and professional training involved here, myself included as well. Moving on to McClure, professional civil engineering firm based here out of Kansas City in Iowa primarily. They have notable projects that are very similar to what we are planning here in Kensington Farms. The notable projects here, West Side Flats and Casey Mo, which are townhomes, Canyon Farms in Lenox City Center, which is a golf course and retail center there. And then, of course, traffic is going to come up tonight, too, but they've done some pretty extensive work up there in Iowa City, doing Interstate 80 and 380 intersection there as well. And then NSPJ Architects, locally-based firm here. I'm sure you guys are very familiar with who they are and their capabilities as well. We chose them for a reason because we want this project to be an elevated luxury type of project. That's most notably what we're focused on here, and you can see what they've done here in the past with larger estate homes up over in the Ward Parkway area, of course. And then Meadow Brook Park, I point this out because this is a lot of the ethos and the idea-making that we had on this project, and you'll see how we lead into that, some of the ideas and things like that, too. And so they did a lot of work over there as well. And then Oxford Row in Overland Park, also another good example of what we are trying to bring here in Kensington Farms. Leading into the project location, I'm sure you all are familiar with the location, but it is on the southwest corner of 155th or County Line Road, as some might call it, and Ward Road. And then we have Prairie Lane and Southwest Prior up here on the west side of the site. Overall, the site is about 140 acres or so with everything that we have in control here, in addition to another, you know, 40, 50 acres or so here remaining that the city and the parks, the school district, Raymore School District owns. Before we begin into the project planning and the philosophy and things like that, I wanted to give you guys a bit of history on this project. So the original development plan was approved circa 2004, 2005, which you'll hear more details from the city staff here in a little bit on this. So I'm just touching on it now. And then construction began circa 2006, and it was planned for approximately 735 single-family detached homes originally, right, back in the early 2000s when single-family homes were the primary construction, you know, throughout the United States. And then since then, roughly 100 units were originally built. Polty Homes was the original developer on it, so a national home builder. And then essentially, 2008 hit in the Great Recession, the Great Financial Crisis, in other words, caused the project to halt. And then since then, the project has kind of trickled along a little bit, and then now what you see here are roughly 279 current buildings built on what was the original plan. And then basically, that left roughly 444 units left to be constructed, and that is where we're leaving, picking up today. Continuing on, the project was actually, the project plan was actually updated in 2014. The plans changed down to 731 homes, but what they did was they added in the capabilities of putting in smaller lots, so creating a variety in housing types. And what you see here are small lot cottage-style homes in there. So then that also leads into some of the product type that we're going to be presenting here in just a little bit. Continuing on with some of the site planning, and here's some of the elevations that what we, what originally were approved. And then what you see here today in some of the single-family section that we provide are not too dissimilar to what is currently there and what was originally proposed. And then ultimately, what this led into was a PMIC zoning for the entire site. So everything around it was R1 or R2 or agricultural, but the PMIC zoning is what allowed for that flexibility in that lot size. And then moving on into a little bit more details, I'm sure you guys are all aware, but just a little bit of education for everyone else. The idea for Plan, PMICs is Plan Mixed Use, essentially. And it's to obtain greater economic vitality, higher standards of site and building design, a high level of environmental sensitivity, and more satisfying living and working environments that can be achieved under the standards of other zoning districts. That's directly pulled from the UDO of Lee Summit here. And then what that essentially leads into is the flexibility for single-family, two-family, multifamily, et cetera, right? So there's a lot of flexibility here. And then continuing on with the project history here, this is kind of a unique one and what posed challenges and why the project has halted for roughly 20 years. This is just one small piece of many others that we'll touch on. But one was the bonding district, right? So the city approved a bonding district for horizontal and infrastructure costs to go into the project originally that since have been left outstanding since the project failed. So since then, the project's gone back and forth from foreclosure to foreclosure, things like that. The bonds have been outstanding, and the current landowner that currently owns it, who we're working with today, has, what you see here in green is what we control today, and those bonds have been satisfied on that end. What remains is the rest of Kensington Farms HOA from a bonding perspective. And then project timeline here, basically a 20-year history, as I mentioned. So 2004, 2006, the project was approved. And then 2008, as I mentioned earlier, the GFC, the Great Financial Crisis that everybody talks about these days and comparing today's market conditions to, in some cases, right? Even though it's slightly different, we know that, but market conditions are challenging today, just as they were in 2008. And then since then, as I mentioned earlier, there's been several REO transfers and foreclosures and things like that, different deed transfers, causing challenges throughout the site to be able to be developed. And then in 2024 is when the new landowner, who we're working with today, acquired the land and satisfied those bonds, and then here we are today, now designing and proposing this project today. Here's an aerial view from 2006. So as you can see here, there's a lot of dirt moved here. So the original project was as a whole. So a lot of the unit counts and the things like that that we'll talk about here today are looking at the project as a whole, right? So the project was supposed to be one. It ended up being... So the project was supposed to be one, it ended up being now multiple in effect, right? So when we look at things from the zoning and things like that, we are looking at this project as a whole, and we are effectively picking the ball up and running it across the goal line at the end of the day with this. So what you see here is the overall project was moving, there's a lot of development happening at this time around here, you have Rain Tree Lake and other neighborhoods up here on the north side, and then since then, of course, 2025, everything else got built out, and then there's still development happening up here in the north, but as you can see, Kensington Farms stalled, right? So you have a large mass of land that was left unfinished. And then part of that horizontal development that you saw from 2006, a lot of these lines right here, right, water, sewer, storm, et cetera, were placed in there in the site, right? So that was part of the bonding district and everything like that. However, the problem with this is that the majority of these utilities were never accepted by the city, so they've been sitting dormant, doing nothing, right? Overgrowth and things like that. So if you walk out on the site, it's kind of an interesting scene, right? There's a lot of overgrowth over the stormwater and the fire hydrants and things like that, it looks like something out of a movie, right? It's a little drastic. And then over here, you have this, what's to be a detention pond, but today it's a retention pond, right? It's not, it's holding water and it's not supposed to, right? It's allowing for algae, as you can see in this picture here, it's a little green, but algae is growing up in there, and then what's happening is that it's overflowing and then leading into Rain Tree Lake, right? And so that leads me into my conversation that I've had with some of the folks at Rain Tree Lake, and they were favorable in this particular part of the project, as well as many others, on being corrected so it doesn't affect their lake, right? And then in addition to that too, there's another storm detention pond up here on the east side that has also been neglected over the years due to, you know, undevelopment, and that's also overgrowth, holding water is the way that it's not supposed to, or erosion from the dirt, and it's getting through to the lake over there to the Rain Tree Lake area. And essentially, I'll jump back to that really quick too, and essentially what has to happen for us on this project, either, there's two options that we could have done with this, either A, we could have studied all of the, all of the infrastructure, and you can imagine the amount of time and the cost that would be, just to find out that a majority or some of it is not usable, right? And then it adds to the additional cost of the project and things like that, it causes a negative effect on the project, right? So essentially what we're doing, what we're planning is to remove all of this and replace it with brand-new, more efficient, so it has a more efficient site plan layout as well. Give me a second. And then here's the existing conditions today, so my trusty partner Ty over there, he brought his drone out here and took some amazing photos that allows us to see what this looks like today from above, right? We've all driven down County Line Road, Prairie and Prior and Ward and all that, and you can see it from down below, but when you see it from up high, it's a different story, right? You can see all the overgrowth, this was all dirt, as you saw from that picture from 2006, if you can remember that picture, that was supposed to be a road network and homes right here, but now it's an overgrowth area. And over here, it's kind of off the, off the picture here, but there's a big gigantic dirt pile that's up there that's been left as well. And then, of course, the city-owned ground is well-maintained, so, well done there. So now we're looking from the east to the west side here, and again, it's just the same story here, here's what you can see, a little more drastic here with the detention pond with the algae and things like that, overgrowth there. Continuing on, here's the, here's that pond again, and here is another dirt pile that has been sitting there and then added to continually by current developers and previous developers from around the area, just essentially became a dump site for dirt, right? And then so effectively, what we have to do for this project is that we have to clear all this, and by our estimates, or what we estimated, is anywhere between 20,000 to 30,000 cubic yards of dirt just in this pile here, it's as tall as some of these homes that are sitting here. So a lot of that, we're going to be remediating and correcting here so the project can be livable. And then the project sightline here, from the southwest looking northeast here, so you can see the existing homes and how all that development came south, right? So that's how development pattern is happening here in Lee Summit, all the way down into Raymore, as you guys are familiar with, everything is moving south and east and west, mostly southwest, towards Belton as well, so we're just following that development pattern as well. Here's a, here's a fun image here, so that really paints a lot of the picture, this is a thermal image here, again from my trusty partner over there, Ty, who took this photo, but this really shows the erosion here, you see these darker blue lines here, there's been a lot of erosion that has happened, and it's collected into this pond here, and then also you can even see these darker blue lines here that have, were once roads, right? And then so now they've all been in erosion pattern, and they flow south into this drainage area, and then ultimately goes into Rain Tree Lake. And then these overgrowth areas right here, so this is that dirt pile that you would see on County Line Road, if you come into Cornwall right here, you would see, from Cornwall, this dirt pile here, that was also a dirt pile that's supposed to be used at one point, but it's been left, and then right here is the larger of the three that we'll be correcting, and you can see it in relationship to these houses right here of how large it is, and problem that it poses for the project if it stays. Now I'm leading into, so I kind of gave you the project history here, but I'm leading into the ethos and how we designed the project, and a lot of it, of course, comes from what the folks here at Lee Summit have created, which is the IGNITE Plan. So, there's a lot of wording here, I won't touch on all of it, but the big piece here is enhance, right? So this is a lot of what we're following here, the neighborhood is existing single-family, we understand that, but what enhance, enhance states is that existing single-family neighborhoods with public infrastructure investment, connectivity improvements, and flexibility to keep the character, but meet changes in the market demand over the next 20 years. So that's why I brought up that project timeline earlier, and how the market demand, how the market will cause the demand for project design, right? So we're just following two, one, the IGNITE Plan, but two, also market demand is very important here. Two other things here, there's quite a bit here on this page, I understand that, but here in the yellow and here in the green, down on the bottom right, we'll be following today, but housing development, the IGNITE Plan by 2040 is looking for 17,445 new homes to be built in Lee Summit, right? The project here today, you'll see, we're only about 3% of that, right? So we're just a drop in the bucket in what we're bringing into this area here. And then also you see the residential one category and the residential two category, the shift in the weight and the production in the future here, in that the current for category one is 72% in the weighting, and then in the future, by the IGNITE Plan, the desires to have 65%, and then you increase the category two. Now I bring that up because we're not technically proposing anything more than category one, and I'll lead into that, but the product type that we have looks like that, or has some similarities to category two, and you'll see that here in just a little bit. And then I'll dive into more detail in this too, but there's a park incorporated into this project too, I haven't touched on it yet, but I will here in just a little bit, but the IGNITE Plan calls for more parks for more folks in the area, and then activates the lifestyle effectively. Here's just kind of a steep incline of population growth, and we've got a lot of work to do, we've got a lot of housing to build, right? So that just kind of paints that picture there further. And then I won't bore you with too much of the math and the facts in here, but essentially we need a 38% increase in housing from what we currently have, and, I'm sorry, in population change, and then we need a 42% increase in housing units per the IGNITE Plan in order to follow the plan all the way to 2040, and again, we're only about 3% for this particular project itself. And then this leads into what I was talking about, R1 and R2 categories, which is also again in page 170 of the IGNITE Plan, talks about missing middle housing, right? So that much of what we have here today, you'll see here in just a moment, with the site plan, is single-family, townhomes, and 55-plus twin villas, right? That 55-plus twin villa, I'm sorry, the townhomes and the 55-plus twin villas falls right inside this category, and essentially what the missing middle housing states is that it's similar scale as existing single-family, but it provides multiple, more units and walkable neighborhoods, and then it's targeting effectively a little bit younger of a demographic, and then also some of those folks who just don't want to have a yard or anything like that, right? Preference, and again, responding to the market conditions, and then also minimize their home maintenance too, that's a big key factor with all of this design as well, right? And adapting to the market conditions. And then lastly here, what we're proposing here, what I just mentioned, is single-family lots primarily located adjacent to the existing single-family, so you'll see that in the site plan in just a moment, 55-plus twin villas, as well as the increase in the missing middle housing of the townhomes and things like that too, provide a variety of housing types, but still fit within the R1 category. And that leads me into what I mentioned earlier, when you look at this project as a whole, it's quite big, right? But what we're doing here, and how we've designed this and still following inside the parameters, even if you just shrink that down to what we have, per the IGNITE Plan to fit inside of category one, we need to be, what the future calls for is 3.06 units per acre. If you just look at our site plan, and not including the existing Kensington Farms, we're at 3.9. I understand it's a little bit higher, but it's much lower than category two. But now, when you look at it from an overall standpoint, which again, this is how we're looking at this project, it's a project that's supposed to be fully developed, and we're here to fully develop it, we're at 2.71 units an acre, right? So we're well below what 2040 and the IGNITE Plan is calling for from a units per acre, and further stating 7.83 people per acre, which the IGNITE Plan calls for 8.14 people per acre, right? So we're sitting right in that side of that category one, which is comprehensive plan as well, so there's two different plans, calls for R1, so we're following inside of that R1 comprehensive plan zoning. And then again, I'll just, I'll touch on these items here, there's still a few more things to get through, but the idea is to create more open space as well, right? So when you squeeze in a little bit more density in the units, it allows for a lot of green space. So you'll see here in the site plan and the site design, and how we implemented ideas from Meadowbrook Park and Prairie Village, this is a very nice park, I'm sure some of you have been there, it, there's a lot of walkability, there's a lot of movement happening in there, and so that is what we're creating inside of this plan today. Economic advantages, which I touch on that a little bit later, so some of that was actually brought up in the neighborhood meeting, was how new development effectively lowers home values, and our basic research study of what we did, it shows the opposite. And then effective transitions and buffers, right? So we're, you'll see it in site plan here in just a moment, single-family, townhomes, and then down to the villas as well, so we're buffering use type effectively, not use type, but housing type from one another. Public health and equality, basically the park that we'll talk about here in a minute, neighborhood security, more people, more eyeballs, right? All right, jumping down here, there's a lot of words here, but I want you guys to focus on the orange font here for the most part, I left this here so whenever we have questions, we can revert back to who it is that we're targeting and why, but more importantly, what I want to talk about is what the project is and what it is not, right? There's some certain things and comments and ideas and thoughts that have come up throughout the design of this project, and we wanted to make that clear on what it is. So it is a market rate community, right? It means top of market of what market is today, right? That's who we're targeting, it is luxury, right? We want to put the luxury word in there, and remember that. In a quiet, well-managed neighborhood scale, and there's also going to be a 10-foot walking trail, we'll touch on that here in just a moment, and then jumping into what it's not, right? It's not a strip center, it's not a commercial center, it's not a high-rise, everything is two-story, right? Everything's matching the height of what's existing there in the surrounding area, and it is not a transient product, this isn't a light tech, this isn't a affordable housing type of project, not that there's anything wrong with that, but this particular area does not call for that, and that's not what we're trying to push here, we're trying to push elevated living. And then here we go, diving into the land swap that we are performing with the city and the Raymore School District. So when we first approached this project, the idea of the land swap came to us by city staff, and so we've gone throughout that process and are currently working through it, and it's all gone well, we've got MOUs out there for the land swap going on right now, so we're just finalizing legal descriptions at this time. So essentially, what we control is what we have here in the red, and then you see the Rapex School District, City General Fund, and the Parks and Recreation own that ground to the southwest of the site, right next to the water tower. And then so what we are doing is that we are performing the land swap, so now our development site is inside this red area here, and then the Parks Department, the city fund, and then the school district actually jump up to the northwest area. And then so what that provides is it provides them the accessibility to more of a thoroughfare road, which is what County Line Road is, right? And when we talked to the Parks Department, Joe Snook, he's, I don't want to speak for him, but I want to say that from what I remember from the conversation is that, from a city perspective, this is the city line here, right? So the dotted line is, Lee Summit is up here and Raymore is down here, so putting a park on a, on a city line there that's supposed to be for Lee Summit residents, and putting it on a Raymore line, it didn't make much sense, right? And then so putting it up on County Line Road allows for it to service primarily Lee Summit folks, right? And then so that is to be potentially a 20-acre park, right? Which is why I referenced the IGNITE Plan and the parks earlier in the presentation, is that we are following a line by doing this land swap, allowing the Parks Department to build a 20-acre park here, and as well as the Raymore School District potentially to be on this, on this particular part of the site closest to the water tower, to build their ninth elementary school. And then public improvements, right? So then that jumps into many of the conditions that we have to serve as the developer, other than all of those utilities and the stormwater and things like that that I mentioned earlier, there's public improvements that we have to bring in here, and then number one, and probably one of the most important ones, is connectivity, and also traffic flow connectivity as well, right? So number one over here, essentially we're going to realign and connect Prairie and Prior in a way that actually makes sense, in a T formation, right now it's disjointed, it's dangerous, and then so what we're going to be doing is running that up through here, you'll see a visual here in just a little bit. Number two is roughly a mile-long, 10-foot path that we will be also incorporating into this project as we move through phases, right? And again, that leads into connectivity and the parks as well, and health and safety. And then now going, jumping into, this is our before, forgive me, the next page says before, it's actually an after, so just mind that, this was our original site plan that we went to, neighborhood meeting number one. So that leads me, we effectively had three neighborhood meetings, one master one with Kensington Farms Neighborhood, which is where you see here, number two was shortly thereafter with some folks over at Rain Tree Lake, and then we also had a third, a second one with the Kensington Farms Neighborhood as well, and you'll see that updated site plan there. So we took all of the feedback based upon this site plan here, it was higher density, it was slightly different product on, not slightly, completely different product, on phase three, and as you can see over here, we had our townhomes on phase two touching existing single-family, and the townhomes and the mansion homes is what we called them, it's two-story multifamily slash townhome type of product is what we originally brought in, obviously wasn't favorable, right? And we had 712 units in there in total, just in our site, we maximized the density, and just to kind of give you the idea why we did that, is for all of those reasons that I mentioned before, all of the infrastructure costs that we have to adhere to, the dirt, the stormwater, and the public improvements that we have to have, density is what allows for that to make that happen, right? Now, we took the feedback and we internalized it, and we found new ways to improve upon that, and we actually reduced the amount of units by 24%, right? Down to 540, actually closer to the original plan of 444, what I mentioned earlier. And we increased the single-family, we actually put a little amenity package in there in the single-family, and all of what you see over here on the east side, there is single-family that is touching existing single-family, so no new housing product type is touching any existing single-family that's over there. Trying to be methodical in understanding of the concerns of the existing neighborhood, with also trying to adhere to the IGNITE Plan and the market conditions. So we reduced the unit count on the, on phase two, the townhomes, and then phase three, the 55-plus twin villas here. So that is a completely different product type from what you saw earlier, those were 10- and 12-unit buildings, these are just two-unit buildings now. I mentioned this earlier a little bit ago, but what you see here in blue is the phase one portion of the project, so the plan is to construct the single-family, detached single-family first, and then phase two, the townhomes, second, and then phase three, the twin, 55-plus twin villas, third, and then over here, if you can see it, that's kind of the Prairie-Prior connection that we are bringing into the site here, and then this black line is that, along the north side on County Line Road, is a 10-foot walking trail. View looking from the View looking from the northwest, looking southeast, so this is Phase 2 right here, what you see in the townhome. So you see all of the green space that we added into here, and we're leaving a lot of the existing green space that's in here. And then what you'll notice on these as well, and why I brought up Meadowbrook Park, because what you see over there is rear-loaded garages. Everything is attached garages, not detached, but rear-loaded, much like what you see in New Longview, not too dissimilar to what you have here already in Lee Summit. And the walk-up front porches and front doors and things like that along the road here. So the idea is to have a viewpoint from single family over to the new townhomes, a little higher density, and have it being an appeasing and a pleasure to look at, really, instead of driveways and garages on the fronts, right? It's a little different than what you're typically used to seeing, much different than what you saw in the early 2000s with those typical four-unit, single-car type of townhomes. These are quite different, you'll see that here in just a moment. And here's the detached single family. And then the twin villas over here. View from the southwest looking northeast, the 55-plus twin villas, plenty of green space. All of these trees will be left, we can't even touch it, it's not even on our property line. So there's a big buffer between the new, the new homes to the existing homes over here. And we've set back more than the actual requirement here and incorporated into a landscape buffer as well to the homes to the west there, too, to provide even further green space. And then we have a fully amenitized package for the 55-plus community. Here is a view looking east, I'm sorry, west, towards our clubhouse for Phase 2. These are the rear entryways or driveways of the townhomes, and you'll see in just a moment, the next slide, a front-facing view of what these look like. But these are all driveways that are off the main road of Cornwall, Blackpool, Penwick, et cetera. This is Blackpool going west, yes, going west. And then so these are the front facades of the townhomes, right? So the doors are offset, so you're not looking straight at a door. It's a little interesting, little steeper pitch roof lines and things like that, too. Little more of an elevated look than what you traditionally look at, or what you traditionally see, but also simplistic as well. And then over here, what you see on these lines are those new single-family lots that we'll be bringing in. The single-family products, not any different than what you currently see out there at all. These are just some elevation samples that we have. These are two-car garage ones on the samples here, but there will be three-car garage homes in here as well. Three and four-bed, two-and-a-half-bath, 1,200 to 2,400 square feet on the sizing of the home. So when we create this HOA, the HOA will not allow for homes to be any less than what the current HOA allows for, right? So these won't be any smaller. They can actually potentially be bigger, if they can be, but they won't be. They'll sell into 400s to 500,000s, and they're fully amenitized, as I mentioned earlier. Also, plenty of green space in here that we created, and they will be for-sale product. Next is the townhomes, Phase 2. Here's the elevations, this is our three-unit product here. So if you're looking at this elevation, this is one unit, two unit here in the middle, and then three unit. As you can tell, there's undulations, there's differentiations in the product type, or I'm sorry, in the depths and things like that, too. And it doesn't look like your traditional four-unit townhome vinyl siding product, which by the way, none of the, we have materials here today for you guys to look and touch at, touch and feel. No vinyl siding or anything like that, so everything's hard, hardy board type of siding. And then these will be two-bedroom, two-and-a-half-bath, anywhere between, around 1,275 square feet is what we're proposing currently, and then they will rent starting at 2,000, roughly just over $2,000 a month. And then three-bedroom, two-and-a-half-bath, 1,400 to 1,500 square feet. These will rent for anywhere between $2,300 to $2,400 a month, again, market rate. And then we have three-bed, two-and-a-half-bath villa, which is interesting. So that'll be on one of the ends here, and that will have a vaulted ceiling in the living room area, so it'll be an elevated look and feel inside of these units here. And those will be roughly 2,900 a month, rough where we're at now. And then a four-bed, two-and-a-half-bath, 2,000 square feet, also be on the ends here. And effectively, that's the same floor plan as the villa, but it just caps that vaulted ceiling off and adds the fourth bedroom in there. 55-plus senior community, the twin villas, two-bed, two-and-a-half-bath, 1,200 to 1,400 square feet. As you can see here, attached two-car garage, we have to mention that on the townhomes, everything's going to be attached two-car garage. And then these will rent anywhere between 2,500 to 3,500 a month, whatever the market calls for. Fully amenitized, as I mentioned earlier, maintenance provided, very important there. So here's the clubhouse, and here's one of the units. And then lastly, the traffic here, so this is my last slide that I'll really talk on to, and then I have a couple other slides that we can refer back to in regards to home values and home pricing and things like that, per the market conditions, but we'll end here. It's the traffic conditions. Essentially, what I'm referencing here is what our original plan had versus what our new plan has, and we reduced the traffic count roughly by 43 fewer trips in the morning, and then 63 fewer trips in the AM, or on the PM. And then there's effectively going to be, at the end of the project, there's going to be five ingress egress points here. So there's existing four all around here, but then as we bring in the park and the school district, it's actually going to run roughly through, in a serpentine pattern, through this portion up here where the park and the school district, or the school will be at. So there's going to be your fifth ingress egress. So there's a lot of traffic ingress egress flow there. These are what I just mentioned earlier. So essentially, what this shows is just kind of a quick housing stat, and we'll bore you with all the numbers, but the green up here is housing affordability in 2015 to 2019 versus housing affordability from 2020 to 2025. We all knew what happened, it got really expensive. So that's what's adding to our market conditions here. And then this is our case study here that we did here, Lee Summit Prairie Village, Casey Moe. Not too dissimilar neighborhoods, basically built next to higher-density homes and what it did to home values. Down here, you can see that it didn't do anything to the home values on the lower end, right? It increased it over time. So that's it. I appreciate you guys, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Soto, I think you are doing the presentation for staff tonight.
Hector Soto Jr., Senior Planner. I'd like to enter into the record Exhibit A, list of Exhibits 1 through 17.
Please enter Exhibit A 1 through 17 into the record.
So as has, as has been mentioned already, the project before you denied is Pathways at Kensington Farms. It's at the southernmost end of the city limits, generally located at the intersection of County Line Road and Ward Road, flanked, bounded by Prairie or Prior on the west side. But we are looking at that southwest quadrant of that particular intersection. So some of these slides are going to have some overlap from the previous presentation, and that's fine. We'll go over them just for everyone's edification and just confirming some details, just drive them home, make sure everyone's clear on what we're here tonight to see.
We can't hear.
So the Pathways Project is essentially made up of three phases with three distinct housing types. We have a blue-lavender kind of component, and I'll use, I'll try to use as much as I can, the laser pointer here to, so make sure the folks in the audience can follow what we're talking about. So on the left hand here, you see a breakdown of the three phases and the number of dwelling units and what type of housing product that they contain. So the first phase is going to be this blue-lavender piece that makes up the bulk of the central piece of the existing Kensington Farm property. And as we're moving south and west, you've got the Phase 2 product that is going to be the attached townhome product. It's primarily going to be three-unit, laterally attached units with some sprinkling in of about nine six-laterally attached units. So the ones that have the six units are primarily going to sit along the southern boundary closest to the third phase, which will be composed of the proposed senior living duplex units. So everything along the perimeter of the second phase will be the smaller three-laterally attached unit product. And again, the lavender-blue area, as has been mentioned before, that's just going to compose, going to be composed solely of single-family, detached single-family dwelling Off to the northwest here in this corner is, the area that's shown blank, is future development to be done under separate application for the future city park and school facility. So just to give some details to some of the existing conditions of that area, the existing Kensington Farm property, or what we'll call the parent property, is composed of about 320 acres. So it composes the north section of this part of town. So in total, we're looking at about 320 acres, existing development and the proposed development. The Ignite Comprehensive Plan, which was put together and approved in 2021, '22, identified this area or gave it a recommended land use category of Residential 1, which the Residential 1 land use category is geared to primarily house single-family residential development, though it does not mandate that it exclusively be single-family residential development. But it does identify that it should primarily be that as the overriding or primary land As part of the comprehensive plan, there are certain goals, objectives, and frameworks that are recommended as we move forward toward the development of the city over the next 20 and 40 years to address the long-term needs of the city. And part of those is the expected, well, the inevitable population growth and the ability for the city to provide housing to satisfy the needs and demands of future, existing and future residents of Lee Summit. And with it, as you can see here, there are certain goals that recommended the provision of a variety of housing options, styles, and price ranges. As we know, the existing population of Lee Summit, it's not a monolith. I mean, there is a cross-section of different lifestyle preferences, price points that different folks prefer, architectural preferences as well. So one of the ideas is to provide more housing variety in terms of the housing stock and the different price points and the types of neighborhoods that are looked to be developed, that encourage walkability, but also provide the options for kind of, that run the range from more urban development to more rural-style development. So we have a goal to provide a range of housing that will satisfy all those needs across that broad spectrum, to satisfy those differing preferences and needs for existing and future residents. So when an application comes before you, in this case, a residential development application, we look at these goals, objectives, and other recommendations from other plans, including the Community for All Ages Plan, that establishes some of the things that we should be evaluating proposed developments to see if we are fulfilling or continuing down that path to provide a quality community as we continue to move forward. So one of the things that was previously mentioned is, and recommended in our comprehensive plan, is identify, there's been an identified need of what's referred to as that missing middle housing, and this graphic here shows what that means in terms of just the style of housing, housing style, that's, and housing product that captures what that definition means. So at one end of the spectrum, you've got apartment development, and on the, you know, other end of the spectrum, you've got traditional detached single-family homes. This product is looking to capture that missing middle portion, which bridges the gap between the two. And within that definition of missing middle housing, as you can see here, you have attached, laterally attached dwelling units. It could include, well, it does include townhomes and could include some low-rise type of multifamily homes. Now, as we go through this process, and for, just for the information on, for those that are not familiar with our processes and requirements, when a plan comes forward for a planned zoning district, much like this one is here, if approved, future development is tied to what was presented as part of that plan. So again, here you have that range of housing types that make up what is considered missing middle housing. The applicant has come forward with detached, smaller lot, single-family, duplex, and townhomes. So although definitionally, missing middle housing could include something that is more dense, if this project is approved, it is specifically tied to limitations to only those style of homes that are brought before this plan of commission and city council if adopted. So any deviation from anything that you see here, to a point, but specific to housing style or housing type, if there's any significant deviation, it would have to come through a whole new public hearing process, where members of the public would be notified and given the opportunity to speak for or against an application. And as we get further into discussion, if there are any more questions about our processes, then we can address those as they come up. So this slide is intended to provide you some of that history that has previously been provided to you by the applicant, but suffice it to say that the intent of this slide was to show what the original intent back in 2005 from Pulte Homes was, which included about, has been mentioned, about 735 dwelling units with a total, with a gross density of 2.2 dwelling units per acre. There was, you know, the previously mentioned revision, which reduced the number of dwelling units a little bit, so effectively had no difference, the 2014 plan on the original Pulte home density. But with this project, if approved, the total number of dwelling units over that's spread across the exact same acreage would increase to 864 dwelling units, which would result in an increase in density from 2.22 dwelling units per acre to 2.71. So it's less than, it's about half a unit per acre. Percentage-wise, it is about a 22% increase, but it's still well within, it's actually well below the maximum allowable density that you would see in a standard single-family R1 subdivision, which has an allowable density of up to four, up to four units per acre. So this one still sits well below what a standard subdivision would be allowed to have as a maximum Here are some references to some previously approved building elevations, just to give you a little bit of a baseline as to what some of the aesthetic, architectural aesthetics that you see out in that subdivision now, which will be the 2005 elevations on the left, and the updated 2014 elevations here on the right. So some of the specifics here to this plan, we've gone over a little bit. Here's the breakdown showing a total of 540 dwelling units. Again, Phase 1 is 235, single-family, transitioning to 177 units of laterally attached townhome units. And then finally, at that southeast corner, southwest corner of the development, we're looking at a total of 128 total dwelling units in attached, laterally attached or duplex Road improvements were something that were discussed, and as part of this development or any development, part of the review process includes staff evaluating existing infrastructure and determine whether or not the existing capacity is there to satisfy the increased demands of, that's created by new development. And where are those, and where gaps exist, or where conditions need to be improved to satisfy the imposed loads on public infrastructure, it then becomes incumbent on the developer, if approved, to provide those necessary infrastructure upgrades to bring everything up to city standard. So specific to roadway improvements on this slide, you, and the applicant So specific to roadway improvements on this slide, you, and the applicant already went through some of this already, there are going to be some road improvements that are, that are going to be required to be constructed by the developer on a phase by phase, phase by phase basis. So here, these color-coded arrows, specific to the shared use path that was mentioned along County Line Road, with the development of phase one, if approved, a 10-foot wide shared use path will be required to be constructed by the developer extending from Ward Road on the east and extending all the way to, I believe it's Rupert in the middle, it's the, the middle road here where this dash line is. So that road improvement or that infrastructure sidewalk improvement would be required as part of phase one development. Phase two development, which would be the, the yellow area, that will trigger, that will be the point at which the realignment of Prairie Lane with Prior Road will be triggered. And with that realignment, there'll be some necessary construction of turn lanes at that intersection. And then finally, the third phase road improvement, which would be again, the duplex development here on the southwest corner of the development, that would then trigger the completion of that 10-foot wide shared use path from Rupert extending all the way to the realigned Prairie Stormwater infrastructure, the, the red stars indicate the location of existing stormwater infrastructure to serve the existing development. The circled area here on the southwest corner would be a future detention basin that would need to be constructed as part of phase three. But again, so here we have a mix of existing, the point of this slide is to show where, what existing stormwater infrastructure exists and what will be future. Like I said, the, the three areas with the stars are existing detention or retention basins, as the case may be, and the future detention basin on the southwest corner of, of the future phase three. Some of the concern that we typically have with, with a lot of residential development is the concern of area neighbors as to what kind of buffer separation might be provided to mitigate some of the impacts of new development against existing development. And in this case, in this case, the, there will be, well, let me back up. There is existing development to this, just bordering the southwest quarter, corner of this development that is, we'll call them a state-sized residential lots that are outside of the city limits, that are in Cass County. And the developer, as part of the phase three improvements, would be required to install what we call a low-impact landscape buffer, which does not require a fence or wall, but does require a certain quantity of landscaping to be provided along the, the length of this area that's outlined or that's circled in, in red. Now, internal to the development, the developer is providing along the perimeter and interior wise of the area that transitions from the single family development to the townhome development. As you can see, it's, the townhome development is bordered by a significant amount of street tree, street frontage trees and street frontage shrubs, as well as lining also some of those interior courtyard areas and passive recreational areas, we'll, we'll call them open, open areas. There's also going to be some areas of preservation, some protected areas because there are those existing natural waterways and that water features that exist on the property. One of the concerns that we often get as well as it relates to development, particularly any kind of laterally attached dwelling units, is the ability to provide enough parking to satisfy the needs of residents and, and visitors. So this slide here outlines specifically phase two and all of these areas that have a star, the developer is proposing to, to provide, you can kind of see a little bit of them underneath, there are going to be some additional, what I'll, what I call parking pods that are scattered through the duplex area so as to mitigate the, the need for individuals to park along the street when there is overflow parking. Now with all of these townhome units, they are, each of the units is proposed to have a two-car garage and then they are also served by a two-vehicle wide driveway. So off the street, each dwelling unit will already have the ability to park four cars, two in an enclosed garage and then two in the driveway. But on top of that, they are proposing these additional scattered pod areas of, of parking that are accessible to, to all residents and visitors to, to this particular area. Similar with the duplex product, phase three, it, it won't have quite as many as the phase two, but again, all of those have already the ability to provide the required amount of parking off-street, but the developer will be providing again, some of these additional parking pods. Now, I will point out that in the lavender area that is all single-family residential, there's no provision for some additional parking pod areas, which we traditionally don't see in single-family residential because there's typically, well, a couple of things. The vehicles, as has been stated, some of these vehicles will be housed within two-car garages or in some cases, three-car garages. There is a little bit of, I guess, overflow parking that could be provided by some of this amenity area, but the biggest reason why you typically don't see parking pods in single-family residential is that in standard, single-family residential areas, parking is allowed on both sides of the street. What you will see along phase two and phase three, where you do have more of the laterally attached units, is that parking will only be allowed on one side of the street. So with, with that restriction, there does come a need to have some of these additional parking pods because, well, one, only one side can be parked upon, parallel-wise. And just the amount, if you can see here, I mean, just the amount of, of driveways and curb cuts along here, just also just naturally cut down on the available ability to, to provide parallel parking along those public streets. Here's some of the elevations that you've already been shown. These are specific to, to phase one. You can see that the, the square footage, these are just kind of a, well, this is, I believe that they are proposing five kind of base models. So you can see that the square footage ranges from about 1,500 to about 2,400 and there is a mix of single-story and two-story. Here's typical elevation for, for the townhomes. So these will have a mix of different types of materials. So they'll be using some cementitious, fiberboard, masonry, and I believe some, some metal details here and there, some metal cladding, and then composition roofs. Here's the duplexes will have, you know, smart siding, options, masonry, brick. These would, these particular units would be, would just be single-story. So there have been two neighborhood meetings that were held over the course of, of this project. It was one on June 9th and one on October 14th. As you can see here, the most heavily attended one was the initial one with 78 and then 47 attendees for the second one. The questions and topics of concern, you know, included, you know, concerns about parking, design standards, zoning, just the context and the history of, of the development and how this project fits into what some of the existing residents bought into from, you know, for the Kensington Farm development, when it was originally developed by Polte. The bottom line here, they see that we have received over 200 protest petitions to this project. And to be clear, I guess for, for planning commission, we've mentioned this before on other projects, but for the information of, of the residents, the protest petition process has no bearing on the planning commission's decisions or processes that are made. So the protest petitions really have a bearing at the city council stage. So if, if there was no mention of any of that before, just want to make everyone aware that we wanted to bring to the planning commission's attention that we have received them, so we are aware of them, we are aware of the concerns, but from a procedural standpoint, there'll be no impact on those and what happens at tonight's meeting. If there is an impact, it would happen at the city council level. The final slide here is approval conditions. There are a couple slight differences on this one. What you'll see is that this slide from what you had on the planning commission or staff report was that here, there's an addition to condition number four, which speaks to the road improvements shall be constructed as recommended in the transportation, transportation impact analysis conducted by staff. So this will, you know, again, ties those road improvements that we discussed that are phased out between one and three, we are tying those and they will show up on the ordinance if approved. And then a slight difference on condition number two as it relates to the impact on jurisdictional wetlands, there was some, a little bit additional verbiage that was added as to identifying specifically the determining body as the Army Corps of Engineers as it relates to condition number two. So with that, I will yield to any questions you may have.
All right, we're going to move to the public comments section of the hearing and I'm going to lay out the ground rules for this. And if you didn't fill out a comment card, you still are able to speak. I was going to go alphabetically with the ones I've already received. I think I have six here. Let's see, five, six. So when you come to the, you can come to the podium here or you can come to the microphone and state your name and address for the record. You will have three minutes to speak. And then after, after the public comment closes, then the commission will, will follow up with questions and then we'll do our deliberations and then, then the vote happens after that. Make sure that you're directing your comments to the commission and not to city staff or anyone else. Keep your comments focused on the items under discussion and then make sure that you keep a respectful and civil tone. Don't be disparaging and you are welcome to repeat points that have already been made, but you don't have to. If someone has already said something you agree with, you can come forward and just say that you agree with it. But we are glad that you guys have shown up and we want to give you this time to speak what you want to speak on the matter. So I'm going to start with Bridget Bruce or, okay, okay. Come on up here. And I'm going to butcher name, so I'm going to apologize in advance.
Hello, I think my voice is loud enough. I'm Bridget Bruce and I'm representing, there are nine houses on Blackpool Drive that I'm speaking for tonight. They were unable to attend.
Can you state your address too?
Sure. 1132 Southwest Blackpool Drive in Lee Summit.
Okay.
I have just seven quick points after the presentations. First of all, I want to thank Petra and the city planner for making a good presentation to us and answering some of my questions. First thing that I wanted to address, and I didn't really see any presentation by either party, on the existing roads and the amount of traffic. They said that there was a traffic study done, but if my numbers are correct, we're adding 540 units. And if we assume two cars per unit, that's 1,080 cars going on existing streets. One of the things that we asked for as a neighborhood is we wanted more access to the development areas because right now, all those cars will be coming through two primary streets and that's a lot of traffic to look at. That's number one. Number two, both the presenters talked about buffers between existing homes and the new development. While there has been improvements made as far as movements of the duplexes and the, and multifamily homes, what the concern that I'm going to speak specifically for Blackpool is that there's no distinction between the housing that's going to go right next, I'm the last neighbor. I, I don't mind having a neighbor, I knew I would have a neighbor, but if they're going to be so different in our styles, I was just asking and we, we've asked as a neighborhood to see if we could have a buffer zone, like a lot or something, green space in between that area. Third thing I wanted to address was the, the housing of the people, the attraction of the younger people coming to the neighborhood. While I do agree that housing needs to be addressed for younger generations, I have four young boys, they usually tend to go and they'll tell us, Mom, we want to be close to a grocery store, Mom, we want to be close to Walmart, we want to be close to fast food. None of that's here. So I don't know how accurate it is going to be to attract people to that area when we don't have those amenities that we can offer them in that corner. Fourth thing I had is, I already addressed it, that was the roads. Corps of Engineers, I was very happy to see on the city planner's agenda that there was going to be a Corps of Engineers study. We live right next to one of the mitigation areas and right now, we get flooding. And yes, that used to be Kensington Farms' problem, but now it is going to be the new developer. So I'm happy to see that that's going to happen and I know my three minutes are up.
Okay, thank you. All right, we have Violet Fireburn.
Hello, my name is Violet Fireburn. I'm 13 years old and I live at 1612 East 160th Terrace, Raymore, Missouri. Before I start, I would like to point out, I have a couple of questions about it. If we have the ponds and then the bunch of the dirt, why don't we just go through and clean up the ponds and then sell the dirt? Because I know people sell dirt or just fill the ponds with the dirt. Okay. So I get that we want to build the homes so we can have more people, but there are some problems with that because last year, a man was murdered in a residential area at Prior on Highway 150. This area has multifamily homes and it's 1.5 miles from my home. This year, a man shot a Lee Summit police officer and fled the rest, fled of, at residences of Echelon, I think, 4.6 miles away from our home. In the previous decade, without the increase of multifamily units, there were not any shootings or murders within five miles of our home. With the increased crime comes increased costs and the city for increased staff for Something we found out during our research to help convince not to do this was that the field wasn't originally scouted for the multifamily homes. It was originally scouted for a park, rain garden, safety center or something else, not for multifamilies. So if that's what it was originally scouted for, then why are we wanting to build these multifamily homes? I got one more thing and it's a question. I want you to ask yourself this, are these homes for the people to help us or is it just to get a few extra dollars in our pockets? Thank you.
All right, next we have Robert Elliott.
I live at 1906 North Prairie Lane, across the street from the development. During the process, when this, this, oh, you want my address, 1906 North Prairie Lane, Raymore, Missouri, but I live across the street to the, to the west. When this process, when this project was developed, I went to every city council meeting in every development. and every development, planning meeting because they made a cul-de-sac at the end of my property with me being the only person on the cul-de-sac. And I had, I still have a 30-foot horse trailer that I cannot get out of that cul-de-sac going north. Okay? And so at the time, I finally got an agreement from the city council, like you checked that out, that I was going to be given access, an access like this across that.
Well, it was a good idea to help you, sir.
Oh, that's okay.
I can give it to all of them.
Yeah, you can have your copy. All right. That's all I have. Thank you.
Do you want to put it up there? Thank you.
Would you like a couple, would you like a little bit more time, sir? Would you like a little bit more time since I, I helped not helped you while you were speaking?
There we go.
This was designed as a cul-de-sac with me on it and there was no way to get my 30-foot horse trailer, which I still possess, out of that. So they allowed or agreed to give access across the Prairie Lane, the relocated Prairie Lane.
Okay. Thank you.
I'd like to have you folks check that out to see that that's still a valid from that previous city council. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Loretta Jane Longwell.
Hello, I'm Loretta Jane Longwell. I'm at 4705 Southwest Davis Drive in Lee's Summit. This is my husband, Mark. He's here for, for support. I'm nervous, sorry. I'm not a good speaker, so thank you for hearing me out. We moved here 18 years ago when it was Polte. It was our understanding that it was 550 homes, not 700, because there were going to be parks. So it wasn't near 700 homes in the, in the community. It was PMIX because it was going to be single-family homes, parks, an elementary school, a safety center, and the nation's largest rain garden that we, we still have the rain garden there. It's a wonderful community and we love it there. We're very disappointed and we don't want the, the multifamily. We, we love it there, so we're very disappointed in all of this, so. One thing that we're concerned about, the, the planning commission, we got that here, the six-unit townhomes, the planning commission came out and said they didn't support that, but yet it's in the new plan. So I was kind of confused on that. The last thing was, in the meeting with Petra, they come out and said that we would not combine HOAs. They were adamant about that. And I got to thinking about that. I was wondering about that. And I come to think about it, with the multifamily homes, I think the drainage would be a big problem because it wasn't meant for that. And I think that the existing, our existing HOA would have a big problem with the drainage, you know, as the, the new homes came in. And I really think that we're going to have a big problem. I, I hope that the city council and the planning commission would look at that and not allow this to happen and get us a big bill for us, you know, few, like we have, I mean, 250 homes right now. So, I mean, please consider us, you know, our residents now that we have, you know, that we would have to take on big bills at the end, so. Lastly, I need, for the, for the townhomes, I know like Longview and downtown, for the townhomes, they can walk to restaurants. We can't walk to anything out where we are. We have a, you know, we have a great community, but we can't walk to anything. So I appreciate you listening to me. Thank you.
Thank you. Ryan McCullough.
Thank you, everyone. This is my first time ever coming to a meeting like this. So yeah, I live, my name is Ryan McCullough. I live at 1,000 Southwest Cornwall Road. I, I also kind of share the same sentiment. I'm not, I'm not, I'm not very excited about the multifamily homes, the way it will change the culture of our neighborhoods. There's a lot of people that walk by my house all the time. There's, there's people who do like bird watching. The increased traffic that will come from this kind of installation, I think will, will undoubtedly permanently change the way that everyone will behave in my neighborhood. The increased traffic, just the overall chaos that comes from people who don't have a, a long-term vested interest or, or a financial, what is a beneficial interest in their, in owning their home. The, the price, the pricing on the phase three, single multifamily homes really don't, really don't make it more affordable than, than the standard mortgage. In fact, I think it might actually be more expensive. And I, I doubt, I doubt the motivations for why we would want to do that if we're going to, you know, if, if you, if you look up what's the mortgage on a $300,000 home, you know, and with, you know, your insurance and your, your taxes, it's going to be, it's going to be comparable. So I don't really see how that's a selling point on multifamily homes. Beyond that, there's the Lee's Summit, what is it? The Lee's Summit UDO Code, Section 4.0.9A, states that there should be no more than 10, 10 people per gross acre. And I think those, that phase two section will go beyond that 10 people limit. So I'm, I'm kind of curious if they're violating the, the bylaws in that, in that, in that regard. Sorry, further, according to the ARC, ARC GIS web data, there is, there are designated wetland zones, I think that was mentioned in there as well. I'm curious, I don't really know which, exactly which portions are those. I believe there's one right across the street from me that has a sign that says it's a mitigation area. There are, every, every, every spring you hear are the frogs, we see all the deer. I know that in the presentation, they talked about, you know, getting rid of all these trees and stuff, but I personally love it. I love, I have no issue with the way that it currently looks. I don't know why it's considered to be something that's not enjoyed or appreciated. So that's all I have to say for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Lori Ward.
So I also have statements from two other residents. I have their name, but I didn't look up their address before I came. I can provide that if it's necessary. I'll start with the first one on my phone, so I can put that down. Her name is Carolyn. I printed it out and then she changed her mind. I'll get it for you. She said, "Hi, I wanted to share with you something I would like read tomorrow. My son is turning one and we have family coming to celebrate. I am planning on being there for the first half hour, but can't stay any longer. Please let me know what you think." Exactly one year ago today, my husband and I were on the phone with our families, telling them our son was born. His arrival marked a key milestone for our current home, which we built five years ago, and the start of a legacy he hoped to pass to him. Our home backs up to the property in discussion here today. We enjoy sunsets, the snowfall, and the nature, including deers, hawks, and other wildlife outside our back window. We were told when we bought this piece of land that because the detention-retention pond, that having homes of any type built behind us were limited. We are here now because that is not the case. The environment is going to be forever changed. The more dwellings built, the less green space there is for children to experience God's true beauty. There is nothing more serene than walking up and seeing deer out your window in the stillness of snow or an autumn morning. The more people in an area, the higher rates and chances for pollution there are. We are a community where we work to get to know our neighbors. We walk our dogs, ride our bikes, our kids play with each other in the street, all things that may not be as easily done with the amount of potential traffic that will be added with multifamily homes built. For my son's birthday, I am advocating for less traffic to help keep him and my neighbors safe to ride bikes and go on walks. I'm asking that instead of multiplex homes, you leave green space and keep our population density lower, so wildlife still come around and have sanctuary. Lastly, and possibly most importantly, I am asking for my son's birthday that the city of Lee's Summit demonstrate integrity and willingness to support our children's futures and rights to have a stable, healthy environment and hold to previous decisions and leave the zoning as single-family homes." So that's hers.
Can you also state your address for the record? So we have it on record.
Lori Ward, 1038 Southwest Cheshire.
Okay, thank you.
The second one is Debbie Cansteiner. She said, "Hello, thank you for taking my email to the meeting tomorrow. Current infrastructure," she makes five points, "current infrastructure is barely kept up with our current population. Potholes, et cetera, are slow to be maintained by the city. Snow removal takes days upon days. Prairie Lane is a county road and that is maintained even less than county line. Accidents increase during times of detours, so would increase even more with proposal number of increase in population. Increase in crime that comes along with multifamily living. Lee's Summit's police department has an entire task force assigned for apartment crimes. Our area is secluded, low density. Apartment dwellers want to be close to shopping and have walkability. Not sure why Petra feels this land would even support interest from renters. What environmental effects will this project have on the area? Thank you, Debbie Cansteiner." So here's mine. I'll try to be three minutes fast. I'm a bit wordy. Good evening, members of the Planning and Development Commission and any esteemed city council members that may be here and fellow residents and friends at Kensington Farm and other parts of Cass County and Lee's Summit. Thank you for allowing us the opportunity to voice our concerns regarding the proposed development in our neighborhood. I gave you my name. We made a deliberate decisions to purchase our homes in Cass County within the city's Lee's Summit. We did so with the understanding, based on official plans, signage, covenants, and the vision communicated to us, original from Polte Homes in 2006 and carried forward by several other builders over nearly 20 years, that this community would be a single-family home development. We chose this because we believed in the promise of stability, safety, a single-family environment, and a community built on those expectations. Today, we feel like we're being treated as an abandoned contaminated island being sold off at auction. When the CCRs were written and the HOA was established and filed with the state of Missouri in 2006, we were all presented then and forevermore with the vision of a mixed-use development that included parks, rain gardens, a school, a community center, and a safety center, a community within a subdivision, not apartments or townhomes. The dream we were sold was one of a harmonious, thoughtfully planned, single-family neighborhood, not dense multifamily housing. That spirit and intent have been recorded, communicated in marketing materials, city documents, home sales, and neighborhood covenants. To borrow a metaphor, calling a dandelion a rose doesn't make it a rose. No matter what label is applied, our subdivision has always been intended as single-family. Attempting to rename or rebrand this project for profit does not change its true nature, nor does it respect the investments and expectations of the residents. In addition, quite frankly, the process has been troubling, but since there's limited time, I won't go into those details. These things matter because of how it's been handled, not just as a process failing, but as indicators of respect or lack thereof for our community, our investment, our homes, and our trust. Beyond the emotional and planning arguments, there are significant jurisdictional, legal, and logistical complications arising from the fact that this subdivision will operate under two separate homeowners. HOAs in Missouri function under a set of governing documents, declarations, CCRs, bylaws, articles of incorporation, and also under state nonprofit corporation law. When there are two separate ones covering essentially the same geographical subdivision or overlapping sections, it can create confusion about which association has authority over what properties, what covenants apply to which lots. There's a lot of different pieces to this, but I'm not going to go into those. The lack of transparent process raises concerns whether this application has been adequately vetted. Given the complexity of governance and conflicting promises versus multifamily development versus single-family, the commission has both the right and the duty to require clarity, enforceable commitments, and compatibility. I think in conclusion, we ask that the commission and council to respect the promises we were made, the rules of the, that are recorded, the governing documents, including the CCR and the HOA, and the people who call this subdivision home. A no vote tells residents their investment, their faith in the planning process, and their expectations matter. If you believe a dramatic alteration of our neighborhood's fabric is justified, then the only fair course is to offer residents generous market value compensation. Those who were promised one thing and now face something entirely different, anything else would be a betrayal of trust. Thank you again for your time and consideration.
Those are all the cards that I have. Does anyone else want to, okay, come on up to the microphone or the podium and state your name and address for the record? Were you sworn in?
Yes, I was.
You were, okay.
Yes, I was. My name is Stephen Polley. I live at 2355 Southwest County Line Road, Lee's Summit. I am six tenths of a mile west of the Prior and County Line intersection. So I'm straight west on County Line Road. Been there since 1987, seen substantial changes. I'm here to talk about two things. First of all, amen to everything that's been said. I agree with everything that's been said. I'm going to talk about character and traffic, okay? Character of this area, in case you have not ever driven through it, is unlike anything that's being proposed. These are single-family homes. Many have been there for years on acres or multiple acres, and that goes to the north and northwest. It goes to the west, it goes to the south toward Raymore. This is unincorporated Cass County for the most part. I live in Lee's Summit because I am on County Line Road and annexed in voluntarily a number of years ago to receive great services. So I'm a Lee's Summit resident talking about this project. First of all, the character of this project does not at all fit with the environment around it. If you would drive this area anytime other than in rush hour, you would see that. If you drive this area in rush hour on County Line Road, you would see a road that has been abused, if you will, by builders. You would see people driving 40 to 60 miles an hour and passing each other in a 35 mile an hour zone. And it happens all the time. I live on the south side of the street. I cannot get out of my driveway sometimes. I have to be careful when I go to the mailbox, which is on my side of the road. So there's a problem there. The problem with that is even though we're in Lee's Summit, the road is considered no man's land. They tell me to call the Cass County Sheriff. I talk to the Lee's Summit Police Department. We can't cover that. That's not our jurisdiction. So there is a jurisdictional problem with traffic, snow removal, accident removal, et cetera, on County Line Road going from Prairie Lane, particularly west, a mile, mile and a half, until you get into Raymore. And I see someone nodding, so you've heard this before. That's my character point. The, 35 seconds. The density of this proposal is being misrepresented. If you will look at the staff report, the 15-page staff report that I think you have before you, you will see on page five that we're talking about 50 townhomes and 64 retirement community, retirement duplexes, not within the character. Let me get to the traffic part. Okay. The original proposal, 2005, is single-family, R1. That's what the area is. Drive it sometime and look it over before you decide. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have anyone else? Come on up. Oh, then you can come up after that.
My name is Cindy Koschinski. I live at Rain Tree, 5131 Southwest Surf Scooter Street. This development is very close and adjacent to where Rain Tree is and where I live. It appears to me that this is more of an investor's project than it is homeowner project. If these are all rentals, my question is, are these people who's paying the property taxes, is there a tax break for the investors who develop this? The rest of us are paying the full load, especially people in Jackson County. And I know this is probably in Cass, but I'm not sure about that. Anyway, yeah, we're gonna load up our infrastructure with a lot of extra people, and we need to make sure that the property taxes are fair and equitable to the residents and being paid. Another concern to me, as I looked at the internet and did some research on Petra Development, they have a disturbing record of fines and violations against them for failing to address some issues with some of their previous projects. So that's a little bit of a concern to me. So that's pretty much all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
I am the neighbor of Jane and Mark. I think two things really need to-
Hold on one second. Cindy, did you swear in? When you, did you swear in?
No, I didn't.
Okay. We need to do that. I guess, can we do it after the fact? And anyone else that's planning to speak? If you haven't sworn in, stand up and-
Well, I was here when they did. Oh, I don't think I did in the middle way.
Okay. Thanks.
Do you promise to tell the tree the whole tree's dead and that's because the tree is so helping God?
Do.
Do.
Well, I am their neighbor, 4701 Southwest Davis Drive. I think two things need to happen. I don't think there was any ambiguity on the development. There should have been single-family homes. It feels like, you know, the rug's pulled out from under your feet. And the other thing, you know, that's doing the right thing. Let's keep a single family. The other thing is let's close the loopholes. I don't know zoning and stuff, but, you know, we heard the presentation and they made a point, well, it doesn't exclude these types of apartments and duplexes, even though it's this zoning type. Let's close that gap so this doesn't happen again. That's, let's get a better relationship between our leadership and communities. So it's a little disheartening to see what I feel like's a loophole there, you know, when you're sold a bill of goods, because I was under the impression it was all a single-family, and it's like, this particular zoning type, and I'm like, wow, that's a big deviation. And that's where we rely on you guys to help us close those kind of gaps. And that's really what, that's really all I gotta say. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else who wants to express a new comment?
Hello, my name is Timothy Mowery. I live at 1121 Southwest Cheshire Drive, and I had no intention of speaking tonight, okay? But I have issues that I know of, and I've lived there for four years, okay? The utilities and water for this community come from different places. The sewer comes from Lee's Summit. Great. I lived in Lee's Summit fully, three miles north, just four years ago. The sewer comes from rural Cass County. Our water comes from rural Cass County, okay? If we're gonna do this, then let's get us all on the same damn page. We shouldn't be doing this game. While we're on the wrong page, let's get the mail fixed, okay? We're Lee's Summit address. Belton is the people that deliver to us, and they, Belton, Raymore, or Lee's Summit can't find our mail when it's lost. And they don't care. When the water district just down the road mailed out water for every month, three-quarters of them came back as undeliverable because they got lost between who's responsible, which community, which office. It needs to be fixed. If you're gonna go forward with this, fix it for us and the future people, whatever the case is gonna be. I can't change that. The frustration with the HOA, if they're gonna have an HOA for their community, they need to have similar laws. We can't park on the street. Why can they? That's a problem. They need to be consistent. And then the last area, little bit was brought up earlier about the legal, you know, is it jurisdiction for public services, fire, rescue, whatnot like that? I've had Lee's Summit come to my house multiple times, okay? But it's Raypack School District. My county taxes go to Cass County, but I've gotta play Lee's Summit rules. We need to fix that, too. It was annexed. We pay the taxes for the stuff to Lee's Summit for the sewer and water that were put in, but I still gotta play the games with Cass County and Raymore. Let's get it all fixed. If we're gonna be in the same and we don't have a choice, if the decision's been made already, at least fix the problems that we have. Thank you.
Thank you. Come on up.
Hello, my name is Debbie Wilson. My husband is Joel. We live at 4616 Southwest Robinson. Have been there for about a year. And one of the reasons that we moved out there a year ago was to get out and to have that rural feel and to live in a community like what we live in now and to have neighbors and to have single-family homes, not to have people renting multi-complexes out there. That's not the reason we moved there. I had no idea this was gonna take place, and I know that happens a lot of places. But I guess one of my comments on putting such a thing out there is, as someone already stated, there's nothing out there. I mean, if you guys have been out there, there's nothing out there. I drive through Lee's Summit all the time. I see property, I see land after land after land. Now, maybe these people aren't willing to sell. I don't know. There's a corner right up there at 150 and Ward. That's a place for multi, that's a place for multi-dwellings. You know, you're up on Ward and there's a Walmart down the road, and there's a Price Chopper down the road. That's where you put those kind of places. You don't stick them in the middle of a single-family neighborhood. That just doesn't even make sense. Now, if this goes on and passes, one of my great concerns is transportation, is the cars and the amount of people in that area. Number one, as someone stated, county line is not taken care of. I don't know if there's an argument between Cass County and Jackson County. It's terrible. It's terrible. And first of all, I think if they were gonna put something like that out there, county line needs to be widened. Yeah, I think the 10-foot walking path, that's all nice. Sure, I'd use it. But what about the cars driving? What about our kids being safe? You're putting a school there? And you got this little two-lane county road, and you're gonna put a school there? We just had two kids in this area, in the Kansas City metro area, get killed last week on bikes. Do we want to invite that to our area? We're a small town out there. We don't need this kind of thing in our area. I've not heard anything about widening roads. I've not heard anything about possibly putting a four-way stop or a traffic light at Ward and County Line and Ward. I don't think we're ready for this. I don't think it belongs there. Thank you.
Make sure as you, if you're coming up, that you're giving new comments, because we've been taking notes of the ones that have been presented.
Well, Anita Blackwell. I live at 1014 Southwest Cheshire. My property backs up to County Line Road, so I can support the reports of the high-speed travel. As far as the concern for increased traffic, when we had a small road, or short-term road closure on 291 for that new roundabout, it diverted all kinds of traffic up Ward and on County Line, and I sat there at that intersection at Ward and County Line, wanting to turn left, and I sat there for at least seven minutes. And it was, it was a traffic accident waiting to happen. In fact, there's already multiple accidents at that intersection. So you add all this more traffic with no more road thought, doesn't make sense.
Thank you.
Thanks.
My name is Glenn Schmidt. 1124 Southwest Willoughby Drive, Lee's Summit, Missouri. I'm outside the area that we're at, barely, before, and I didn't get any information about it except being on the line and also working with the development company. You know, my background is in construction management and project mainly in my earlier days, let's say. I'm retired now, but I see still a lot of work done. And there's always been loopholes through, from day one to final project. There's no doubt about that. But one thing that I recently saw out, and a lot of items have been already talked about, is the water and fire for this area that we're adding on. As of Friday, the Cass County Public Water has not been talking to a developer yet. They haven't had a conversation at all. And the other one is, if I'm correctly, what I saw tonight, that the homes for the individual is between 400 to 500, I can't see how they could price that one. There's no possible way, especially when the house right next door to me is listed at 615. So it's somewhere along the line. Math doesn't add up right. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I don't see anyone else. Do you have a different comment than the-
Different comment, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
For those people that, I'm Robert Elliott. I live at 1906 North Prairie Lane, Raymore, Missouri. Historically, this thing has taken place because the mayor at the time of this, of Polte taking this on, wanted to control everything, south and everything in the area. She could have walked away from it and didn't. And the reason it belongs in Lee's Summit is because she chose to put it in Lee's Summit. And in fact, we tried to convey to her at that time and to the, to the, everybody on the planning board, et cetera, that this was supposed to be all, single-family homes all the way up, and the higher-priced homes were supposed to be facing the property that had acreage, and that was supposed to match the requirement. Like homes in Cass County, you can't put a development in unless like is against like. And so in order to accommodate that, the larger homes were shoved to the west end of the development. And then I'd like a further comment to make, and that's that, I'm not sure that when the, when the developer here, the new developer, chose to put in, move the school, did he address the fact that there's not really any access for the school down low, so it has to be up towards where that pile of dirt is? That is, all the top soil that was down on the bottom was scraped off and put up from all the low area. And that, when the school goes in, there's a creek that comes through there. I don't know if it's visible. It's not on the map. You can see it on the old map. There's a creek that comes through there and comes from the north side of County Line Road, comes through there, and then goes to where the water retention basin was put in and now is being redone. But that school development, if they want that property, the property down south, on the south end of that, or on the west end of that, you'd have to put in roads around culverts, you'd have to put in lots of culverts, and I don't think the school board realizes that that's not exactly the safe, she doesn't want to, the school boards, they said the school board did not want to be up by the water tower. They're gonna have a lot more problems if they go try to use any of that property down towards the creek where it crosses the road. And it's not, and they don't show the creek where it crosses the road on their map. And that destroys everything. You can't get anything down there without putting lots of work around it. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, I don't see anyone else, so we're going to take a 15-minute recess before we move on to questions from the commission.
Ever wondered how the city budget works? The total 2026 budget is over $380 million, which includes funding for daily operations, capital improvements, debt service, internal service, and enterprise operations. For example, the general fund is the foundation for the city's day-to-day services and investments like road maintenance, public safety, and fire protection. The general fund is supported by property taxes, sales taxes generated by local businesses, franchise taxes, and other sources like licenses, permits, and fees. For every dollar citizens pay in property tax, the city receives 18 cents. This means the city receives $845 a year in property taxes for a median single-family house. These taxes provide public safety, park maintenance, infrastructure, and the best services to keep Lee's Summit going and improving. One of the community's top priorities is infrastructure investment, which is reflected in the capital improvement plan. $113 million of the 2026 budget is invested into the capital improvement plan. The 2026 capital improvement budget includes investments like the 291 and 50 highway interchange, Third Street, Warden-Purcell's intersection, and Pryor Road. The budget process includes guidance from the city council, citizen input, and critical success factors from the city's Ignite strategic plan. To learn more about the city's budget, visit cityofls.net/budget.
When the person called on the phone, she said that there was a dinosaur walking down her road. Of course, we had to go out and check that out. We get out there and it was a big African tortoise, probably 60 pounds, walking down the road. And they walked, they really stand up tall, so I could see why she thought it was a dinosaur. I'm Rodney Wagner. I'm the manager of Lee's Summit Animal Control. So as you can see, we get all sorts of animals here. You got some guinea pigs off to the side. All the windows up here are animals that are adoptable right now. Every one of these dogs is ready to go and ready for adoption. And the same thing with our cats over here. A lot of cool cats in here now, so. So this is our three-acre lot we have out back, and this is where we do all the walk-in dogs, exercise. We also have a side yard off the side over there, so we can let them run loose. They can run together, and then we have what's called play groups. Kind of like having a bunch of kids. Here's our vet room. We have a vet that comes out twice a week. This is our Sally Port where we bring the animals into. This is one of our animal control trucks, and we can hold up to six animals. We have a lift on the other side to put big animals in. We actually have temperature gauges in here and in the truck to tell us how hot it is. Once it gets to a certain temperature, we bring all the animals back here immediately. Once it gets to a certain temperature, we bring all the animals back here immediately. So this actually has traps in it, but we do a lot of wildlife trapping. I mean, a lot, so. Bats, pot-bellied pigs, horses, cows, emus, a lot of reptiles. We had a citizen one time that had over 200 reptiles in his basement. Caymans and alligators in here that are four or five feet long, you can't keep those. And people do, and they're surprised when they can't keep them. I'm like, really, you're surprised you can't have an alligator in your house? Our main goal here is public safety and also the safety of the animals, and we have very dedicated people back there, and they definitely stay here for the love of the animals, which also includes getting them adopted out. We'll have about 4,000 impounded animals a year, probably about close to 2,000 are dogs and cats. The cats and dogs, when they get impounded here, they go on a five-day hold, and then after the five days, if the owner doesn't show up, then we can put them up for adoption. Adopt a animal here is actually really simple. You just come in, look for whatever animal you're looking for, find the right pick. You have, you go to the adoption room up there and see if you get along with them, you spend as much time as you want to in there. From that point on, it's just a matter of making sure they're spay or neutered and all their vaccination's up to par, and they're good to go. We have a very high adoption rate because we try everything in our power to get animals adopted out. We have Heart of America, a humane society that we do a lot of adoptions through. And then we also have other groups. We have some people that literally will just look all over the country for somewhere for a dog to go, and we sent dogs up into South Dakota, North Dakota, Washington State. So it's actually, it's a huge united effort to get all these animals home. Tarzan's got lots of energy. Hazel's got a weird meow. Bellbell, she wants nothing to do with the other cats, she'll kind of get her grumpy face going. And the good thing about the people here is that they get all their friends to get animals too. All of us have probably the limit of all the animals that we can have at home. You know, they are huge animal lovers. If it was up to the people here, we'd have 15 cats running around in here. We had a citizen one time out there and he was bathing his two nine-foot-long boa constrictors in the front yard. Apparently I was, I was gardening some, some attention, and so we went out there and had them talking about that. Do I do this job? Ah, dude, I love this job. I grew up on a farm, and taking care of that many animals, you can't help but like animals. This is just like fancy farming. You know, you're just bringing animals in here, taking care of them, and, and finding them homes, and yeah, absolutely animal lover.
This is the best place to work.
I love working here.
I feel very blessed.
I love it here. I look forward to coming to work every day, being a part of this team.
Like a family away from home.
Where everyone feels like everybody knows their name.
A city that supports you. We see that with our benefits.
A pension, vacation days, job security.
Being able to be heard.
We feel valued, we feel respected.
Lee Summit is a very progressive city.
It's growing, it's thriving.
We have this drive towards not just doing a job, but doing it with a spirit of excellence. I had the opportunity to continue to grow regardless of 30-plus years doing this kind of work.
It's more than just dollars and cents.
We're here really to give back.
Providing a service to better a community.
To go out and serve people.
To be a part of something bigger than yourself. If I would have known what I know now, years ago, I would have been here much sooner.
Traditionally, we think as police officers, those responding to law enforcement needs within the community. But honestly, we are there to serve our citizens, and our citizens do go into crisis, they do have mental health crises, and we're being called to those scenes on a regular basis. In order to help serve those citizens better, we did initiate the Crisis Intervention Team Program. These are officers that are specially trained to de-escalate crisis situations. Recently, we've brought co-responders onto the scene, licensed, qualified, mental health professionals housed within our police department, and they respond with those officers directly to those scenes where a crisis is occurring so they can interact with that citizen and get them the help they need right there on that scene.
The co-responders are either a bachelor or master level in a behavioral health-related field. They wear plainclothes, they don't carry weapons or anything like that.
I have a police radio that I listen to all day, listen for, you know, those key words, mental health, behavioral health, crisis.
There's a lot of officers that just call for me, I have my own radio number.
I also have the ability to self-dispatch to them and say, 982, then route.
Officers in route, 914.
So typically, I arrive after they've made it safe, I'll make contact and get kind of the rundown, and then I just kind of jump right in.
Like, hey, you know, my name's Allison, I'm a mental health professional, I'm here to help you, I'm not here to take you to jail or arrest you.
Sometimes, all a person needs is a voice, someone neutral, someone outside that, you know, can listen. I do a lot of safety planning, including family, their support network, who's close to you, is, can some, if they're home alone, who can come over and hang out with you today? Can we lock away your sharps? Can we put up your meds? Do you need meds? Can we get you over to the urgent care to get you assessed for your medications? Some of them also are like, oh, I'm so glad you came, this made me feel so much better.
Our main goal as co-responders is to, one, get people connected to the services that they need, and also divert from emergency rooms and jails.
And they almost get a different view of the police responding. That lets me know you care and the officers care.
Lee Summit Police, can we help you?
My husband has.
In 2020, we had 722 mental health-related calls for service. 2022, by that time, 1,479. These mental health-related calls for service are increasing. How we're responding to that is increasing the number of crisis intervention team officers we have available, as well as the number of co-responders we have available to respond on these calls.
So what I think is important for the community to know about the co-responder program is that we're here, we exist. All you have to do when you call 911 is ask for us. You know, say, hey, I want a co-responder to respond to this, this crisis, and we'll go. I was really struggling about eight years ago. My personal journey with mental health, and I met some amazing social workers and amazing programs that have helped me get to where I am today. I really couldn't see myself doing anything else. We want to help, and that's, that's what we love to do.
So I had a client, we got a call, she had some suicidal ideations, and she really felt that she had nobody. And, you know, and getting to know her story, and getting to know, who comes around and sees you? Well, then we found a support person, and they responded immediately, and we made a plan. I called back and checked on her in an hour, and then I checked on her in two hours. We were able to get her into additional services to where she talks to someone every week or more. I just took a person that really just thought they had nobody, and nobody would show up for them and show them you do, and you'll be amazed who is in your corner if you just
You can make the difference in somebody's life.
If you're trying to get in the fire and need that service, Lee Summit is probably the top name.
On a daily basis, we are tasked with an incredible task, so we're trying to keep it a relaxed environment.
As a new person, you are constantly on edge, learning.
Morning will look typical, coming in, getting a report from the shift that's going off, get our truck checks done.
Our citizens trust us and believe in us by providing amenities like our gear, our stations.
They build it to accommodate getting to a call, but also having a home. State-of-the-art weight equipment.
Individual bunk rooms.
Downtime areas.
Breakfast and dinners together.
Cook together. Get to know one another. Train together. Like a brother knows a brother, and a sister knows a brother. Banter back and forth, but when the tones go off, they go to work.
We're here for 48 hours, so it can happen at any time. You can be in the gym, you can be in the middle of the night, you can be cooking.
Stop what you're doing and listen. Wherever we are in the station. People will stop what they're doing and listen, finding out which station it is. What is the nature of the call? EMS or? What apparatch? Where are we going? Is it in my district? Can be on the highway, northbound, southbound, westbound. Am I assisting somebody? What gear do I? Other lives involved.
That adrenaline dump.
Pants on, coats on, getting in the truck, we're mentally focused, geared up, paying attention to where we're going. Then we have a game plan that happens in the truck. The officer can give direction, and the dispatcher will update you, the officer will listen, the driver will listen, we get all in the same payday, when we get to the call, we can go to work. It's only in degrees of severity, structure fire, swift water rescue.
EMS.
Car accident.
Technical rescue.
Tac medic team. Equipment the fire department offers us is top-notch, from ring cutter to extrication equipment, state-of-the-art stuff, great trucks.
Tablet, Lucas device, battery-powered pot.
The right tools, the right training. The learning does not stop in the academy.
Building blocks continue call after call, opportunities to grow. Started out as a firefighter paramedic, moved to the rank of engineer paramedic, most recently the qualification of acting captain.
Firefighter, engineer, recently promoted to captain.
Promoted to paramedic since I've been here. I'll be honest, it's scary sometimes. You're the one back there, that person is having a bad day, and they're counting on you.
We practice these scenarios over and over, so when someone has an emergency, we can channel those energies, minimizing any more injury. And then when it's over, we'll say, hey, how did we do? How is everyone doing? And we'll have frank conversations back at the station. The station assignment for us is a 48 on, 96 off.
The four days off is probably one of the greatest things ever.
Help us improve our sleep patterns, wellness, mental health. It gives you many, many options.
I have a small, little 15 acres that we like to hobby farm, backpacking in the spring and in the fall, mountain biking when the weather's good.
I have a 21-month-old at home, so I feel like I get to work a full-time job, and then on the four days off, be a stay-at-home mom as well.
Spend a little more time with my kids, travel around the world. I was able to take my oldest daughter on a trip of a lifetime. We went to Europe for 22 days. I got hired to help others. Helping others also helped me see my children grow, see my family grow, see my career grow, and me grow as a person.
People that are in the industry know the name of Lee Summit Fire Department. Every fire academy knows it, every other fire department knows it. If you're looking for a job in the fire service, Lee Summit's the place to be.
That's who you want to be, somebody who can make positive change in all the human
Welcome to the Lee Summit Sign Department. We are going to walk you through our process from start to finish. We make signs as needed here. It's not like we just go out into the field and place a speed limit sign here, no parking here. Our traffic engineers, they go through and they'll do field studies, they'll send us down an engineering work order for us to go out, place new signs or remove signs as needed. Coming from the material, our blanks come in, and they're just aluminum blanks. We can put our white, our red, our, you know, our fluorescent yellow, green, whatever. And basically what it looks like is just that there. Throw it up into the, the roller.
We're going to reopen public hearing, and I'm going to start with the commission for any questions that you might want to ask, and I'll start with you, Ed.
My question is for the city. Have we done a comprehensive traffic study for, for the amount of people that are coming in, coming in with this project, to include the schools, widening, widening the roads? Where are we at with that, can you tell me?
Susan Berry, City Traffic Engineer, yes. The, the team has provided a traffic study. I do have the traffic engineer here, if you have specific questions, she can answer those for you. But it does, it incorporates all the additional amenity, or all the different parcels that are coming in, and it looks at every intersection, every road surrounding the area.
Yes, is there, is there, is there a plan to expand the roads?
At this point, no. We, do you want to? This is Janelle, she can explain her study.
Thank you, thank you, sorry.
Hi, Janelle Clayton, Merge Midwest Engineering, 2668 West Catalpa Street, Alatha, Kansas. So yes, our study looked at a couple ways to analyze the potential future growth here. We looked at a 20-year scenario and applied a 3% annual growth rate to the existing traffic on top of this development, and that's a pretty aggressive growth rate, typical for studies in these areas is 2%, it's a pretty standard, 3% is, you know, in taking into account the undeveloped area around here. So we, we are pretty conservative in looking at volumes that can develop here. And while we're not widening County Line, the realignment of the intersection, we are providing turn lanes on all approaches, so we will be widening for those turn lanes on all approaches at the realigned intersection, and then turn lanes also into the development driveways. So we are expanding the roads in that, in that context. We're not widening County Line Road, but we are providing turn lanes.
Turn lane at County Line and Ward.
Excuse me, um, question, well, questions, the public comments is, that part of the hearing is closed, so we need everybody to listen to the answers when they're given up here.
Chair, I have a follow-up question.
Okay.
Related to that, that question. Thank you. So who owns County Line Road? Is it Cass County or is it Jackson?
I'll defer to your city.
I think it's an interesting question.
County Line is a Lee Summit Road.
So County?
In this area, and then to the west, it goes to Cass County.
So from Ward to Pryor?
Is city.
County Line Road is a city?
Correct.
Street?
Yes.
Okay.
And then it goes to Cass County to the west.
Okay, great, thank you. That was my question, Chair, thanks.
Since we have you up here, can you just run through, I know there's, there's widening of a number of different road, well, I say widening, adding of turn lanes to a number of different roads, can you kind of run through, maybe even on this, this aerial that we have here, exactly which sections of roads are going to get those improvements?
Yes, trying to see.
And explain kind of what they are so that everybody here understands?
Is there a laser pointer?
That laser won't work for them to see on their screen, so if you use the mouse.
Okay.
Do you see we have the laser on here for you already?
Okay, perfect. Okay, thank you. Yeah, so like I said, here at the realigned intersection, I'm here, we will have separate left-through-and-right turn lanes on all approaches at this intersection. It'll be stop-controlled on the north-south approaches, so a two-way stop-controlled intersection, separate left and right turn lanes on all. Okay, perfect. Okay, thank you. Yeah, so like I said, here at the realigned intersection here, we will have separate left-through-and-right turn lanes on all approaches at this intersection. It'll be stop-controlled on the north-south approaches, so a two-way stop-controlled intersection, separate left-and-right turn lanes on all approaches there. Moving south to our site drive off Prairie Lane will include a southbound left-turn lane, 200 foot of storage plus appropriate taper at that location. And I will say the left-turn lanes at this intersection here will be 250 feet of storage plus the taper, and then the right-turn lanes, the northbound and southbound right-
What does 250 feet of storage mean for folks that are sitting here, so they understand?
Yeah, 250 feet is your full width of the turn lane. And so if you think of a car, a vehicle, we estimate that each car is about 25 feet in length, so 250 feet is going to get you 10 vehicles of storage into that turn lane, plus the taper in advance of that to move you over to make your turn. And so at this intersection here, we'll have right-turn lanes, the northbound and southbound right-turn lane will have 250 foot of storage plus the taper, and the eastbound and westbound right-turn lanes will include 200 foot of storage plus taper.
Does anybody have a traffic-related question?
Yeah, you're on. Are there any other, I mean, we have two other entrances off of County Line. Are those getting any kind of turn lanes?
I believe, does this one have the right-turn lane in there already? Is this one we're adding?
Are those existing? Is that what you're asking?
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
Let me look here. I think it might be existing. Give me a minute, please, to confirm. Yeah, that's an existing right-turn lane. So we have a right-turn lane here, and then we're not including turn lanes. We did do turn lane warrant analysis with our volumes, and no additional turn lanes were warranted at those other intersection locations.
Okay, one other follow-up question. I've heard in this meeting, it reported that originally, under Pulte Homes, there was 550 units, give or take. How many units did your traffic study account for?
Our traffic study accounted, so we had 235 single-family detached homes, so that's your typical single-family, and then we had a total of 305, what's classified as single-family attached housing. Our trip generation that we calculate based on a national industry standard, any kind of townhomes or duplexes are classified as single-family attached housing. So we had 305 units of that, which makes up 123 plus the 54 townhomes and 128 duplexes. So that was the total of 305 there, plus the 235 single-family homes.
So... 540, okay. So we went from, just so I'm tracking this right, about 550 under Pulte to, when it was redone, 721 at one point, back down to 540? Is that correct? That's incorrect. What's the correct, what's the total?
The staff report that we have on file was for the 735 units, so.
Okay, so we went from the reported 550 at Pulte to 700 and what?
The Pulte one, the original one from 2005, was 735.
Okay, 735.
Yes.
And what's the current?
With, you mean the proposed one?
Yeah.
That will take it up to, oh, what was it, 864?
Okay, so we're roughly about 100 more units than what it was originally designed for, roughly.
Yeah, about 130 more, yes.
130, okay. All right, thank you. That was my traffic questions. Actually, one other, sorry. It's a road question, not a traffic question, so actually I'll save it because is there any other questions? Yeah, I wanted to follow up with, is there any plan for traffic lights?
We did do traffic warrant analysis for all the intersections here. None of them currently or with this development will meet traffic signal warrants. There is a plan for the future 20-year to have a traffic signal at Ward for the 20-year condition. But these intersections will all operate, as far as capacity analysis goes and warrant analysis, they will operate acceptably without traffic signals.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Lovelace, do you have anything? Okay. Commissioner Drafton?
Yeah, thank you. I did want to follow up, Sue, on the, I know the county, yeah, sorry. Sue Berry, please, to the front. On, I know, on the capital impro-, on the capital improvements plan, I know there's improvements of Ward and Pryor to 150. I don't think there's any, I think actually 150 to County Line Road on Ward is due, is part of that plan for the future, right?
There's nothing in our five-year capital improvement project for-
Other, isn't? I could have swore I saw something.
There's a Ward project from Blue Parkway to O'Brien, and then one from O'Brien to Chipman. So there's, it's up north.
Oh, yeah, you get, no.
It's Ward Road up north. Pryor Road, we have, Phase 1 is under construction, Longview to Hook, Phase 2 is Hook to 150.
150, yeah.
But nothing south of 150.
Which will be done in '27 or due to be on course in then? So there's nothing south in that area for, in the capital improvements plan currently?
No, not for the five-year plan.
Even though, and I'm not sure of the timeline of this project, but, so when we're looking at updating that in the future, I know we always look at where growth is in the city and what's happening. Okay, so you answered my question, thank you very much. I do have another parking question, would that be you? I know, I did hear a resident say there's no parking allowed on either sides of the streets in that neighborhood, is that true?
That's an HOA decision. That's not anything that city, that's not anything that city-
They can be more restrictive than the city?
They can be more restrictive, yes.
And then, so my, I mean, I, you know, I always, when we talk about density of housing in these areas, I noticed they put in more parking off-street, because that's my biggest concern in these neighborhoods, is they get overpopulated with cars, and it does become an issue. So I was just curious, would we be requiring no parking on one side of the street in that neighbor, in those proposed areas, where there's?
Yes, we are. Phase 2 and Phase 3. I don't believe there's any-
And Phase 2 and 3?
Phase 1, at this time, there's no parking restrictions.
Okay, great.
After it's, you know, if it's approved and it's built, then the neighbors can do a parking petition, and, you know, if it becomes a problem, it can be addressed later. But we require the no parking on one side through Phase 2 and Phase 3 because the roads are narrower. There's just less places to park, due to all the driveways in the smaller lot, you know, the smaller lots.
Okay. All right, yeah, I think you answered my question, thank you very much. My other questions related, I think it's for the developer. What is the proposed timeline for Phase 1, Phase 2, Phase 3?
Yeah, so overall, it's going to be anywhere, it's going to be upwards of a 10-year project over time, right? And it's going to happen in separate phases. But Phase 1 set to begin late spring, early summer, and then that's going to be roughly a 32-month process just for Phase 1. So there's roughly 12 phases inside of Fa-, I'm sorry, seven phases inside of Phase 1, right? And then Phase 2 is also going to have a similar situation as well. Now, with the infrastructure of Cornwall and things like that, there could be some overlap with Phase 2 with Phase 1, but likely it's going to happen at least a year later after Phase 1 starts. And then Phase 3 is, again, there could be some overlap with the way Cornwall rolls through and there's infrastructure that goes in, because Cornwall is going to get improved all the way through to Prairie during Phase 2. So that's going to add into that additional access point over there. At that point, which would then allow for Phase 3 to begin, which again is likely going to have some overlap, but likely be a little bit later than that, too, but multi-phase. So if you think about Phase 1 in and of itself, roughly three years, Phase 2, roughly three years, and Phase 3, it's a little bit smaller, so it's probably going to be about two and a half years in total. So if they were to just start on their own, it could be upwards of 10 years' worth of time.
Yeah, so you're saying-
I'm sorry, nine years.
Yeah. Yeah, that, I mean, that seems pretty ambitious, just from my seeing lots of developments happen in the city.
It is ambitious.
235 homes is what you're projecting to build in Phase 1, correct?
Correct.
I mean, that's a pretty fast click to build that many homes in three years. I don't know that I've ever seen it done, but I could be wrong. I'm not a developer. So we're talking about at least three years to build out that phase.
At least.
And then you're not even going to be looking at Phase 2 until after that or building roads out?
The soonest for Phase 2 would be halfway, it's a three-quarter through Phase 1, assuming how funding goes and things like that.
Okay. So 2029, 2030?
Ish, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, and then you would be building out Phase 2, which is the multi-plux complex, the three-plux, the six-plux buildings, correct? That's Phase 2.
Townhomes, yes.
Townhomes, yeah. I know, people don't like me to reference them like that, sorry. Okay, the other question I have is related, is that where it says second plot Kensington Farm up there, and there's that big open lot in the middle?
This one right here?
Yeah. Like, is that unbuilt?
That is currently being built out by Inspired Homes, to my knowledge.
So Inspired Homes is building that?
To my knowledge. Last time I was out there, when I put out the yellow signs with Ty out there, they were moving some dirt out there at that time.
Okay, well, yeah, that was my question, like, what's happening there, like, why? But I knew clearly that was not land you guys owned. I was just curious about it, and I was wondering if you knew.
Yeah.
Okay. What about lot sizes for those single-family homes that are purple?
Typical lot size is going to be 52 by 125, with a 40 by 70-foot, 40-foot front inch and 70-foot depth, buildable setback there inside of that lot.
No lot is less than 52 feet?
That's correct.
What's the widest lot? 75?
Upwards to that, yeah. Depending on, whenever you're getting into these curves and things like that over here, you're, we're going to be touching that. But the typical lot size along, you know, these somewhat typical roads, everything pretty much has a curve in it, so there's going to be a lot of irregular lots, but the typical target lot size is 52 by 125.
Okay. Is that comparable to what's currently out there?
Yes.
So, because I don't know, it looks like it is?
So there is, there's variations in there, too. But if you look on this east side as well, right here, we pretty much match like-for-like with the current here, so then you follow that typical lot size as well.
Okay, I think you have answered most of my questions, thank you, sir.
Yeah, no problem. Any other questions?
I got one saved, it's kind of related. Do you have speed bumps identified in this development?
We did not, but that was something that was talked about in neighborhood meetings and things like that. Honestly, I'm not opposed to a speed bump or anything like that. I mean, if, you know, further studies and things like that, or concerns about traffic come in, I don't have a problem with a speed bump or a few speed bumps going throughout and mitigating traffic. We're doing that in another project, too, where we have the walking path lights, where pedestrians would hit those lights. I'm not opposed to things like that, to create the safety in the community.
I do have another question for you. I know this isn't directly related to Planning Commission, I know this is probably something that'll come up in City Council.
Sure.
But are you planning to ask for tax breaks for this project?
That's something to be discussed during City Council.
So it's undetermined, okay. All right, thank you. My question, thank you, I'm done. City staff, Hector, maybe, I don't know. I was hoping you could shed some light on the zoning for this land. Like, I'm just curious, and I tried to find it in the report, so I'm sorry if I overlooked it, because you guys are very... Well, I know it's PMX now, and was PMX in whenever it was started, and was it 2005 or something like that?
2005, yes.
What was it before PMX? Was it ag or was it-
It was zoned agricultural. So Kensington was originally unincorporated Cass County. As part of the Pulte development project, these 320 acres were annexed into the city. It originally had ag zoning under Cass County designation, and when it was entered, once it was annexed, it was rezoned to PMX for the original Kensington Farm development. So it went from ag to PMX as part of the original Kensington Farm.
Now, I know, I don't know if you were here in that time or not.
I was.
You were?
Oh, yeah, I was.
I didn't want to, I wasn't trying to date you.
You didn't want to assume?
I wasn't, yeah. You're so yawn. But do you have any idea, like, I'm just perplexed by the PMX zoning there, for if it was planned, basically R1 development, Pulte was going to build out homes, I don't know if there was a plan to put apartments in there or something like that, or?
No. So the way PMX has been used, we'll say it's been evolved, it's evolved from the time the UDA was adopted and PMX was first established in 2001. The short answer to the question, so it's not to drag this out, was, no, there was nothing beyond single-family homes shown on this development, not counting any of the public-private development, which, you know, school, park, fire station. So no, it was all originally that. The reason for the PMX was that Pulte originally broke up in, and I'm relying on memory, which may be a little bit rough, they essentially broke up their subdivision into, we'll say, like, four different sections that had four slightly different characters to it, but still all single-family residential. There were some areas that were restricted to single-story only, some that had the option for one, one and a half, and two-story, and then variations in between. So they had these kind of separate sub-areas, but it was all single-family all the time. So it was to accommodate different lot sizes, which were a little bit smaller than our standard R1 zoning. So the PMX toolkit was used to accommodate the varying lot width and different development standards within the various areas that contained, that made up Kensington Farm, if that makes sense. So, so the uses were uniform, let's put it, the uses were uniform across the development. There were just different development standards that governed, as it relates to setbacks, primarily, that governed some of these different sub-areas, where it became difficult to just apply, like, an R1 zoning without granting X number of modifications to it. It was just easier to say PMX, this area will be subject to this, this area will be subject to this, but the uses were all uniform, single-family.
Okay, I think that you definitely answered my question, so I thank you for reaching back into your mind for that, thank you.
Hector, can you pull up the comprehensive land use map?
Oh, sure.
I want to piggyback on what Terry started, or Commissioner Drafton started talking about with that. So, okay, this is the, and then, so when I was studying this, it's, when we look at, and I'm talking about the whole, the whole map, as it's currently zoned, and then what's confusing about this is it's, this area is currently zoned, there's PMX all over in this region, comprehensive plan, the desire for it is R1, is according to the staff report, it said R1, and so that causes confusion because it feels like with zoned PMX, we can't change zoning necess-, I mean, we can't just say we're going to change it all. But there seems to be an incongruency between what the comp plan seems to want, I guess for lack of a better word. Do you have, did you, do you have the staff report? It's on page, I want to say 2, and it says, comprehensive plan designation residential 1.
Sure.
But then zoning existing is PMX.
Yes.
And I think, I think that's what causes some of the confusion here.
It's understandable.
And, and I know, so I, does that kind of help explain why we're a little confused?
So there are two different things. So the land use designations in the comp plan talk about broader residential categories, we'll say, as opposed to rubber-meets-the-road zoning, individual zoning district classifications that are applied to specific pieces of property. So if you were to look at it a little bit, the comp plan is- So, if you were to look at it a little bit, the comp plan is looking at things from, like, a thirty-foot-thousand level, where it's saying, the recommended land use, we think, should have this general characteristic.
Right.
Now, zoning is something different, that's applied differently, so zone, you could hypothetically, I don't wanna go down too much of this, but hypothetically, you could have single-family residential under any residential zoning district. So, the labels on the zoning side don't directly align with, you know, R-one, or residential one, under the land use.
And so, because in this case, density falls into the, it's, it's a density that falls into R-one, correct? With, when we look at the, the project as a whole, I think that's what makes it kind of confusing, because it...
It's, it's a little, again, I could see where that is.
It's two-point-nine an acre, is what the density.
Yeah, two-point-seven-seven is, when you look at this development, and how it fits into the rest of Kensington Farm, the original parent development, the overall density is gonna be about two-point-seven-seven.
And four is density for R-one?
For, if you were just looking at the R-one zoning district, four-point, four-point-oh units per acre would be the maximum allowed zone.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
Amy Nassup, Deputy Director of Development. I think the other thing just to add here is, this is just one small page piece of the comprehensive plan, where we have lots of housing goals in it. The land use map, as Hector says, this is, R-one means category, and the R-one says, for the comprehensive plan, that it is primarily, or, you know, a lot of single-family, but it does not dictate, or say, every single thing is single-family, doesn't dictate lot sizes, it does not dictate height, architecture. Those rubber-to-the-road things are when you get into the, to the zoning piece of it. Because we allow single-family homes in our R-four district, R-three district, and that would align with this. Also here, for instance, we do have, when you look at the whole Kensington, the majority or a vast portion is still the single-family. And so, that's how staff gets to the recommendations and things that we do, do too. If that, I hope that helps a little bit.
Does that help, make, make more sense?
But the comp plan gives you your overall vision, and the zoning is how you start to actually enact it and do the things on the detail levels of each of the lots.
Well, it also points out the importance of zoning decisions, because if a development doesn't happen and that zoning's in there, we, we have, we can have issues down the road, so. Okay. I just wanted to ask that one question, and Commissioner Grono, do you have some questions?
I have a quick question for the applicant, more of a clarification. So, under the umbrella of partnership and development, and we've already talked about how the property, or this particular project could take many years.
Sure.
And the, this project would, and the buildings that are being built, or the areas that are being developed, would be under your care and maintenance. The, there was a question about fines. Is that the same company as yours?
No, that is not. So, that was brought up in actually the very first neighborhood meeting that we had. From my understanding, from the very first one, there's many different Petro developments out there. It's a pretty common name, if you Google it. We're, we're fairly small local company, out of, based out of Wichita, we only have a few people here in Kansas City. Now, like, as I mentioned, I grew up here, but some of those other ones that you, that they were referencing, one of them in particular that we found was in Washington DC, completely unrelated. And we did actually find some of those fraud elements that they brought up as well, with the company Petro Development out of Washington DC, completely unrelated.
Thank you, I just wanted to clarify that.
Yep, no problem.
All right, and then I have one other question around public safety, oh, not for you, so sorry.
Thank you.
My bad. Public safety, jurisdiction, police, and response. So, I don't know who... Is anyone, can anyone talk to that?
Maybe ask your question, we do have someone from the fire department here.
Well, so there were some questions about, we've heard a lot about, we've heard a lot about speeding of particular areas, concern about safety. Who, who, fire, sure, fire-related, if there is an emergency.
Craig Hill, Public, I mean, is, sorry, the Fire Marshal's Office. As far as response for fire emergencies, medical, things like that, it's within the city limits, so it's gonna fall to us. The closest station is the one, the brand-new station number five, built just down the road, so. Same thing with police, I can't totally speak to them, but it's within the city limits, so it's gonna be taken care of by at least some of the police department.
And they have a new substation.
And they have a new substation, which is in the old station five, so.
Yeah, great. Thank you. Okay, I think that's me.
Commissioner Tuzinski?
Yeah, I don't really have very many questions, but I do have one, and it's for the property developer. Was there any consideration of flipping the multi, the townhomes with the, I guess, the fifty-five-plus community, to kind of get that separation more away from the single-family with something that's more quiet? You know, was there any consideration like that?
Yeah, of course. So, we put, I guess, to use your term, quiet or loud, if we're gonna counteract that definition, more in the middle, to consider the larger estate lots around there, and putting the less dense as possible next to that as well. Now, that originally was different, we had different thoughts and different ideas at that time, until we had the neighborhood meeting, received the feedback, and then we said, you know what, let's have our least-dense product, other than, in regards to units, down in the southwest corner there, that's next to, next to the larger estate lot homes.
And if you could, if you can go down, if you could move the screen down here, there's a few. With regards to the, uh, let's go right there. Go back, right there. With regards to the single-family, was there any consideration of having those covenants be exactly the same as the covenants for the existing single-family?
Yes, of course. Mostly to materiality, which, there's, I'll caveat this, that there's existing homes with vinyl siding and things like that in the neighborhood. Our CCNRs will not allow for vinyl siding, for one. For two, the main thing is the sizing of the homes, making sure that the smallest home that's in the existing CCNRs is matched, if not greater, in the new CCNRs. And we'll go through the whole HOA review process and things like that too, just to find all of those finer points, but those are the two main things that we picked out, which are the most visible and the most things that you can feel. Things like, you can't park your RV out in the driveway, things like that, typical CCNR type of things, like, that's going to be obvious there too, and then we'll probably dive into the weeds about fencing and things like that as well too, but where everything's uniform. So, very much consider the existing HOA in regards to the single-family and the existing, the new single-family and existing.
And that section of townhomes that's really surrounded by single-family, what was the intention, why was that not additional single-family? Why was, that seems like it's intruding into all the rest of the single-family, and that, that street, and the street, just up to the, I guess we'll say, northwest, seems like would've been a nice barrier between the two. Why did you push additional townhomes over there? Why was that not more single-family?
In the, in the townhome area, right here?
To the, to the east, to the east.
Oh, to the east, right here?
Yeah, why was that not single-family? Why was that still more multifamily?
The biggest thing here is, is project density in regards to much of what I talked about earlier, regarding all of the public improvements that we're gonna have to make, as well as improving all of the existing utilities, and those three gigantic dirt piles that are in there. It starts to escalate some costs and things like that, so.
Business, right?
It's a business at the end of the day, I understand. So, there was, there was definitely thoughts there, and there's some limitations to increasing the amount of single-family there. So, what we did, you can't really see it in here, sorry, but this was pushed all the way over, and we oriented those, those townhomes in a way, and all the townhomes are undulated, right? So, nothing is a flat box of, like, the typical townhome of what you see, it's just totally different. I have my own standards and distaste to that type of product, because it just, it was rinse and repeat and all that stuff. So, anyway, I say a lot of that because it was oriented in a way to where those would look at existing single-family, and if they looked out their back window, they would see the orientation of the building, and they wouldn't see the entire mass. Now, when we received feedback, obviously, it wasn't well-received. So, what we did was that we added in additional single-family against the additional single-family there, over there on the east side. You know, there's, there's a lot of different things to consider, it's, it's a huge project, a lot of moving parts, so, so yes, nutshell, yes, we did.
All right, thank you. Mayor Chair, I think I'm telling my questions.
Thank you. Commissioner Benbrook?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Yep, we'll start with the applicant.
Sure.
Quick question about your company, you said it's kind of an umbrella. Do you have a development wing? Do you have a construction wing?
Yeah, so we have a development, which I lead the way here in Kansas City, so we have three major projects that total over five-hundred million dollars worth of development currently in planning process, and one over Lenexa City Center that should break ground early next year. That's roughly a four-hundred-unit project as well. And then, we have construction management in-house, and then we also have financial and asset management in-house as well. As mentioned before, our company is a little small, but the players that we have here, they all come from private equity and large institutional type of firms, really well-rounded individuals and really well-educated, majority of them are D-one type of educations and things like that, so, yeah.
So, do you have a, for lack of a better term, a company under your umbrella that maintains the rental properties?
We do, but there's also times, and this may be one of those cases too, where we hire a third-party, larger institutional-sized property management firm that would actually have better capabilities in certain situations we wouldn't.
But as far as the holdings, that's your company, it's a separate company from the development company?
Yeah, so each project is its own entity, effectively, so.
So, when you build a project, you pass it from one umbrella company to another umbrella company? Like, does your development team sell it off to your holdings team after it's built and the phase is completed?
That's, that's not quite in my wheelhouse of the company, to be honest with you, but I understand from the most part, so Petro has the umbrella, each project phase, if you will, would have its own entity, but still be managed by Petro, the umbrella. In a nutshell, in a quick, easy way to say.
So, I'll get straight to the chase. For the rental properties that we're looking at here, once they're built, they're gonna be sold or transferred from one part of the company to another, to the holdings part?
Correct.
Okay.
To our asset management team, yes.
Does your holdings company hold or own any single-family homes?
Yes.
Okay.
In various parts of Wichita and Kansas City.
So, my question, then, you're not gonna like this one.
Sure.
When you build the single-family homes, what's to keep you from selling it to your other umbrella corporation for rent, instead of for sale?
These ones right here, on the single-family, the detached single-family, we are going to be the land developer, and then we will sell the lots to another home builder that will build the homes for sale.
Okay, so are you gonna select those builders?
Yes, we're going through the process right now, we're not, we're not done with that process at the moment.
Those builders sell them, though, your company can still step in and buy them, your holdings company?
I mean, there's, there's nothing that restricts us from doing that, but would, would we? No. It's, it's not really in our business plan to do this type of model.
So, follow-up question to that, we're gonna go to your HOA that you're gonna develop, is it gonna deny rentals?
There's, I mean, we're open to discussion on something like that, we haven't really narrowed down exactly what it's going to do at the...
Possibly. Okay. So, we're not, we're not discounting the fact that these can become rentals, we're not even discounting the fact that they're guaranteed a sale outside of your corporation, is that correct? As a planning commission?
In, in the current moment, there's, there's possibilities, but I can't say that definitively in the current moment, of what's, it's going to do. But I'll tell you right now, the, the plan, the business plan and the long-term intention is to make those for-sale homes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. A few other questions?
Sure.
Let's see. As far as your, I think it's your six-unit and your, what was it, nine-unit or twelve-unit?
No, no, we took...
Unit and six-unit?
Yes.
Okay. We've got roads on both sides, correct? Garages on, on the backside?
Yep. Alleyways.
Alleyways?
Yep.
Are we practicing four-sided architecture there? Or are we gonna have nice ones on one side and, and regular facades?
Four-sided architecture, yes.
Equal material, equal design?
Yeah, I, sorry, I don't have my presentation up, but you could, you would be able to see it, but yes, even, even the, so the buildings are oriented in a way to where they're not completely flat, in a straight line, from unit to unit to unit. They're actually undulated back, so the ends of the units are actually set back a little bit further than the inside units. So, even when you drive on the backside through the alleyways, you still see undulations and some architecture with there too.
Okay.
Yeah.
Can we get a, an enlarged site plan up? I have a question about your off-street parking and the way you've placed it. I don't know if, I think it was a staff report that had the starred map that showed the off, off-street parking, I got a couple of questions about it. There we go, perfect. Oops, there we go. This should, uh, help out, I think. So, it looks like... I wanna make sure that these, these parking nodes are at the front of these units, not at the rear of the units? Is that correct?
These are at the rear.
So, the, okay, so the off-street parking would face the rear of a unit?
Yeah, there would be in, inside of the alleyways, where you wouldn't see any on-street parking through the main thoroughfares through here.
So, if I'm in one of these units and I give somebody my address, and they pull up to the front of my house, they're not gonna have anywhere to park?
On one side of the street, they can.
Okay, but all the group parking or off-street parking is at the back of my house? So, if I tell them, hey, instead, go down this street and park in the off-street parking, how do they get to my front door? Is there a back door?
There's, there's, there's garage access points there, or there's sidewalks walking around to the front of the house.
Okay, so you're gonna have sidewalks, are you gonna have addresses on both sides? Because the fire department's gonna wanna know that, and so is the police department gonna wanna know that, when they get a call?
If that's a requirement, then yes.
Okay. So, each house is gonna have two addresses?
No.
Each unit?
Well...
Well, you got two different streets, so they're gonna have to be named, right? And then you got two numbers, one on each side of the house, so you got two addresses per unit?
No, just one, one address, so, I mean...
Okay. So, are we not naming the alleyway streets? Or is it just gonna be alleyway?
How do we have that set up, Paul?
Whatever the city requirement is.
Yeah. I mean, so we talked about public and private streets there, so...
So, that's probably something we need to work out, because right now, that's confusing, and if there is an emergency under this situation, they could end up at the wrong unit. Okay. All right, last question, maybe, not guaranteed. When you looked at this, earlier you brought up the Ignite Plan, which I was not here when it was developed, but I hear it was lovingly birthed through great, great hours and many, many nights by the planning staff and the commission, and I appreciate the work that they've done. You brought up four points, one of the points, you skipped over the first one, you went directly to the second one, which was like improvement or something like that. The first one was preserve. You skipped over that one. So, when you looked at this development, instead of preserving the initial PDP, the initial development plan, you went right to embedment, which was adding density so you can make a little more feasible product for your bottom line. Besides just this being a business deal, why did you overlook just not doing this all for sale, single-family?
So, we did. And again, it goes back to the existing conditions of the project, and also one of the reasons why it's been sitting for a little while, and for twenty years, roughly, since it's failed, as a single-family-only-for-sale community, nobody else has bought it or done anything with it, correct? So, we've looked at it originally, right? Because the original, when I first came to city staff and I said, hey, what about this project? How do we do this? And they said, if you abide by the original plan to the T, which, there's a lot of difficulties getting all of the, no fault to the staff, it's, it's a twenty-year-old planned project, so there were files that weren't available. So, to make a feasible project based upon existing files that aren't available is really tough to do, including the existing conditions, as I mentioned earlier, as a whole, make it really tough. And then so, we evolved into doing different product types, not product types, it's not even different product type, because it's still technically attached, single-family, right? So it still falls in the single-family category, if you really want to get down technical. And how those things place and things like that, right? So there's placements and movements and, and all of that, right? So all of that takes consideration. But at the end of the day, we also abide by the, the newest Ignite Plan and of course, there's, there's some things that say, no, it doesn't make sense, but then there's other things that say, this makes perfect sense. So any comprehensive plan that you have, I mean, there's going to be conflicts, just like there's, there's the com, the conflict between comprehensive versus zoning, right? So similar idea there. So also, taking those things into consideration, it is not an easy puzzle to put together. And then so hence, and also taking the feedback from the staff and the guidance from the staff, which they've been great to work with, and we had an entirely different plan and they, they completely changed it on us. Not, not in a bad way, this has turned out great, but yeah, it's, it was all considered.
Did you do a feasibility study as far as what your profit line needed to be with a single-family residential approach?
That was the first thing that I did, because they said, if I stick with the original plan, I would not have to be here today. We could just go straight into final permitting.
That's all the questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. That's all I have for now.
Anything else? Sure.
Couple of quick questions. So with respects to the existing HOA, you mentioned like, you know, trying to kind of mirror some of the CCNR requirements for the single-family stuff to be a good neighbor, right? It, when you look at the overall plan, it makes some sense, at least to me, that that might be something that made sense where it, you know, at a minimum, the single-family product might join the existing HOA just so that it does mirror all those different things. What's the consideration as far as that's concerned?
There was, yeah, that was the idea, because again, from simplicity's sake, just as I answered the question earlier in regards to consideration of single-family only, very similar, let's, let's make this a little bit easier on everybody. Let's incorporate the new with the old. And some of the considerations were the outstanding bonds that are out there with the existing HOA. To, to be candid, we didn't want to inherit a new problem, right? Because since we're already fixing a lot of other problems, and then that is a whole another ball of wax that we'd have to open. In addition to, we've had conversations with the, with the home builders that we're having discussions with, and they said, hey, let's, you know, for them, it would be a lot easier for them to manage their crews and their time and things like that and the way that they sell the homes by having a new HOA that would be controlled by us or a party that we employ effectively.
Are you, are you referencing like, you know, what might be as far as existing committees and things like that, like ARCs as far as, you know, not having to go through that process? Or what do, I don't understand what you, what you mean by that.
No, I mean, you know, the existing HOA has, you know, has their own things going with it, right? Without, and, and there's, and if we were to have to put in our new homes into an existing HOA and then also sell these homes for what we're trying to sell them for and also having to deal with existing problems that we didn't create.
Sure.
That, that.
That'll make sense to me. It's just the, it's just the, you know, that, that next step as far as, sorry, if you could figure that out, does it not make sense just to co-mingle that way?
But. I think in the, in the future, it could, right? Because there's, obviously, once the HOA is fully built out, there, there would be an opportunity for those residents to, to co-mingle with the existing residents. There's nothing saying that they couldn't do that.
And share amenities at that point and some different things like that.
Yeah, at a later date, but I think while the project's going on and, and sales are happening, it makes sense to have control over the new and then later on, then there could be some co-mingling at a later, at a later date.
Okay. There's some discussion about the wetlands and, and so what is the, I mean, is there a mitigation plan? Is there, what have you done as far as a, a study with respects to that at, at this point?
Yeah, we've done a wetland study, which you see these little green spots here. They identified existing wetlands that kind of moved throughout the, the entire community. There's some that we obviously would build on top of, but they're not connected to any streamway, so it allows us from a Corps of Engineers perspective to get a Corps permit to, which was previously already permitted by the Corps of Engineers. The timing just ran out, so we just got to renew it.
Okay, okay. But you guys will handle all that and you'll.
Of course.
Mitigate what you need to mitigate and you guys will get credits where you need to get credits and all that other fun stuff.
We'll abide by the rules.
Okay. And then there was some discussion, somebody made reference to the fact that you guys didn't have, or that you hadn't confirmed water coverage with the, with the Water District. Is that accurate?
Engineering question?
Paul Osborne with McClure Engineering, 1700 Swift Street, North Kansas City. So both Cass County Roads and the Water Department have our current conceptual plan for review. We've not received any feedback from, from either of them, but they are both aware of the project and what we're proposing.
Okay. I, I guess, just as a general comment, I know the Water District can, Water Districts, I'm not, I guess I would generalize it, they can be difficult to get feedback from, but I do know there is some capacity issues out in that area. I would think that's something that you guys would want to confirm.
Sure, yeah, and we'll do our own test as well. We'll perform flow tests on all the available, wherever we're going to connect to make sure it is sufficient.
But you guys believe there's adequate utilities for everything that you're proposing out there, so no issues as far as you guys are concerned?
Yeah, it's always hard to tell with the water until the tests are done, but we'll, we'll certainly make sure.
Okay, thank you. And then I do have a few questions for staff. So Hector, I guess, with respects to building materials, you referenced that, you know, deviations would need to be approved. What's, there was, they did a nice job actually of providing full material sets. What, what's considered a, you know, a significant deviation to, to trigger additional discussion?
The verbiage and the language of the UDO as it relates to deviations is that if changes to architecture, I'm going to paraphrase here, if, if there's, if they're to the point that they, that there's incompatibility issues with surrounding development, then that would be considered a major change. Now, they're kind of approaching a similar tack that other developers have where they're providing a broad enough palette of materials that covers, it covers pretty much everything. Like they said, they're, they're not including vinyl siding, but other types of materials, the cementitious siding, like your hardy-type material. They're calling out some, some use of metal, more of it's kind of like trim-type of accent material.
But like the townhomes, for instance, they were pretty specific as far as the elevations and the material types and those different things like that. And so I guess, I just wanted to understand, is that what we would be getting with this project as far as, as it's, as it's constituted and because of the PMIX? If there is a deviation from that, would they not have to come back in for approval?
Only if we find, only if it's staff's determination that, that the proposed change results in a significantly different product that negatively impacts its compatibility with area development.
Okay, sounds good. And then to that end, actually, what, the elevations that were shown, and I think they were just kind of some DL Horton renderings, but what is, what do you consider the compatibility of the existing homes versus the elevations that we had for the, the single-family homes?
Well, there's a mix of, there, there are homes out there that were built under the original 2005 plans. There was that update in 2014 and then inspired here in 2023 or so, they also updated those plans. So we, we feel that the proposed architectural palette of materials reflects a reasonable kind of, we'll say, evolution of materials and architectural styles from what was approved like 20 years ago, because, you know.
Things change.
So yeah, things change, styles change, new materials are, you know, come to the market. So we, we feel that, taking into account that there are some of these changes in architectural preferences and uses of materials, that we feel that it's, it's a compatible, reasonable progression of architectural style.
Perfect, thank you. And then, so there was items, improvements that are triggered based on the phasing that we had.
Correct.
And right now, I think the only kind of additional improvement that was required in Phase 3 was the sidewalk extension. I, I may be butchering that, but I think that's where, I guess I was just wondering why, where, where is that sidewalk section at exactly? I might have been a little bit unclear about that first.
Sure. So Phase 1, there'll be the shared path that'll go from Ward Road to Rupert.
Okay.
And then, that's, so that's Phase 1, that'll go in with the purple.
Okay.
And then the last piece that extends it from Rupert to Prairie, to the relocated Prairie, that will come in with Phase 3, the duplexes.
I thought that was Phase 2 and then?
No, the, the Phase 2 improvements are going to be the realignment of, of a Prairie and the turn lanes in the area.
Is there a reason why we didn't, I mean, that, that seems like that would be a reasonable thing. I understand you're trying to break up the, the improvements, but that seems to me, if that isn't, I was wondering if it was the section to the south or something like that, but if it is that section, to me, that seems like a reasonable thing to have included in Phase 2. So just, I guess, is there a reason why it wasn't?
I don't know, Susan Berry can maybe speak to that a little bit more specifically as to why it was relegated to Phase 3, but certainly, if, if there aren't any mitigating circumstances that doesn't allow it to be done as part of Phase 2, we'll say, I mean, that's something certainly that can be recommended as a.
Condition.
As a condition of approval.
Right.
For consideration.
I think we were just trying to reduce the burden on how many improvements had to be done early on in the project. That's required as part of the unimproved road policy. Okay. That's included as part of the unimproved road policy. And so, you know, we could require that upfront, but it doesn't connect to anything on the West End, so it's sort of starting the, starting the infrastructure, starting that shared-use path.
Okay, well, do you want to just go on ahead and follow up on that? Thank you. Okay, okay. Staff, there was a, a question about an access agreement from Mr. Elliott. Are you guys aware of that? Is that something that, do you guys have any comment on or is that something that needs to be investigated a little bit further?
No, it's funny you mention that. In, in 2005, at the time that the rezoning and PDP was approved for Kensington Farm, there was a condition of approval, it was condition number 13, that addressed the extension of Mr. Elliott's driveway to Prairie Lane, which I presume, it's based on a specific drawing, which I haven't put my eyes on yet, but I'm assuming it, it assumed the extension to accommodate for the future realignment of the road, because it currently connects to Prairie Lane. So I'm assuming it was codifying or documenting that extension to the relocated road.
Okay.
So, yes, we're aware.
All right, sounds good. And then I guess the last thing, just because we've talked about it a little bit, is just how everything collectively drains. And I don't, as far as water management, and maybe that's a question for Gene, but just explaining that to us a little bit, because we've heard there's some challenges out there and there's a, a pond that apparently is, is filled with silt and some different things like that. So just what the plan is there?
Do you want something different?
Oh, yeah, that's fine. Hello, Gene Williams, Development Engineering, Senior Staff Engineer. They do have an existing detention basin, which is, you know, it's a wet detention basin and it was designed, actually overdesigned at the time. And then there's two others, northeast and, and then the other one, east. But the main one that you're talking about was overdesigned. They'll also be putting in this one on the southwest corner at that time.
But will be adequately managed as far as for BMPs?
Right.
Perfect, thank you. No more questions, Ms. Chair.
Commissioner Trafton?
And thanks, you covered my other question.
Yeah, Hector, I did want to follow up. I know, and I think Mr. Burke's presentation, he did talk about people per acre. I know it was referenced in one of the comments from the residents. I just thought it would be good if you could clarify that UDO standard related to, I mean, I know in your report, you list a number of units per acre, and we don't really necessarily reference people per acre in that report, but can you clarify that for us, please?
So from a zoning perspective, the density is tied to the number of dwelling units per acre. I know he cited, if I recall correctly, he cited 10, which is.
People.
More of a RP3 standard, which is like a mixed use. So in this particular case, again, we're, if approved, this would go up to 2.77, which is significantly lower than even your, your standard single-family residential zoning district.
So the density would be below the stand, the UDO standard?
If you were to compare it to a standard single-family subdivision that has R1 zoning, even with this proposed increase of units of 130 over the original plan, you would still be well under the maximum for a standard single-family subdivision.
Okay, great. Thank you for that clarification. Thank you, Chair.
If we have no more questions, I'm going to close public hearing and then ask the Commission for comments or a motion. Commissioner Benbrook?
Yes, thank you, Chair. I want to address two comments that I've heard tonight. One is the nature of the site, trees and animals. The reason why those are there is because this is a failed development. The builder that started it failed and walked away and nature took it back over. What you bought into was a neighborhood of single-family homes and that's what you should expect, and I agree to that. That's what you should expect. I do not like the single-family for-sale home percentage compared to the rental percentage of this development. I can't support it. I think it needs to be greatly reduced. Right now, we're looking at probably a 50/50 mix if you look at acreage and probably a one-third to two-thirds mix when you look at unit count. I think that needs to be flipped drastically. I have a hard time supporting a rental neighborhood punching into the middle of a, of a single-family-owned neighborhood. I don't like that. It's bad planning. When you look at the basic concepts of planning, that needs to be shoved to the outside where the, where the greater traffic is and the residential brought into the middle. So I think it's, it's a decent approach for what was being handed to you and what you're working with, but I, I can't support it tonight, I'm sorry. Actually, I'm not sorry, it's just not, it's not sustainable. What Lee Summit needs is single-family residential homes for sale, and I think you could do that by changing Phase 2, combining it with Phase 1 and having a Phase 1 and a Phase 3 development. We also need a 50 and older neighborhood and that could be a rental and that could be maintenance provided and that would probably be welcomed in this area to, in Lee Summit, a lot of our, our people who are selling homes and are retiring need a place to go and they're having to move outside the city to get it. So Phase 1 and Phase 3 I can support, Phase 2 I have a hard time with that. So I think you've done a lot of work and I know staff's done a lot of work and I appreciate it and I appreciate the considerations that have been made, but I think this needs more work and I don't think it's ready for approval tonight. Thank you.
Madam Chair? Yeah, I, I want to mimic a lot of what Commissioner Benbrook said. I think there's a place, at least, on for this, but I don't believe it's here. I'm not a huge fan of the higher density in the middle and, and the lower density with the 55-plus on the outside. I understand what you're trying to do, but I think you're trying to shoehorn something into a place that it really doesn't belong. And I, you know, and I liked the way that the multifamily, or the, you know, the, the townhomes, how they looked. I, I liked what you had planned, I think that's great. And I appreciate you coming in and trying to take a, a problem parcel, but I too, I do not really feel like I can support this. If I get the opportunity to make a motion, I'm going to motion to deny. But I don't want that to be an impediment for you to come to the city, because like I said, I believe there's a place for this and like Commissioner Benbrook said, the 55-plus is great, it's needed, the multifamily is great, is needed. Some 55-plusers don't want to live in 55-plus and they want to live in a townhome. They just don't want to have to deal with the maintenance. And there are some younger people that do not want to own homes and they would like to do this, but we got to take a look at what's around and where this is sitting. And immediately when I opened up this packet and started looking at it, I'm like, why is this surrounded by single-family homes? It, it just does not fit here. So, and like I said, I appreciate you coming in here and we do definitely would love to see you do somewhere, do something like this somewhere in the city, but just not this place. So that's my comments and I'll pass it on.
not this place. So, that's my comments, and I'll pass it on.
Two seconds. I appreciate the presentations and how thorough they were. It was one of the best ones that I've seen since I've been up here, so thank you for that amount of time and energy, and staff as well. You guys have worked really, really hard. And for everyone who is still here, thank you. Most people just leave after that you guys make comments. So, I appreciate you all being here, and I appreciate all of the, the friendly comments and the collaboration tonight.
Yeah, I think, you know, my struggle with this is we need this kind of housing in Lee Summit. I question mark the rental aspect of, I would love for this to be for-sell. You know, I know 50, I'd like to echo Commissioner Tsuzinski's comments related to 55 and older. There needs to be more 55 and older maintenance-provided housing in this community. It's part of our plan. We know we need it. We know people are wanting it, and, you know, I would love it to be for-sell. And in this neighborhood, even mixed, but, you know, the way that it's kind of phased out in here, I'm just not sure. I mean, I kind of agree with what's being said related to, it would have been nice to just take over the PDP. I've actually been through this process with a failed part of my neighborhood, going to another developer and not really living to the true standards that were set. We have an apartment complex where homes were supposed to be. So, I get it, like, I understand and have lived through it, but I also know that part of our development did live true to the previous PDP that we had, and our homes are being built that way. And so, I mean, I can kind of relate, I definitely can relate to what you're saying. You know, so my, 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 I guess, trepidation is related to the fact that we need this in the community. I'm not sure that it's where it should be, and that's unfortunate. So, I guess that's part of my struggle. I do, I do want to echo, I do think you did a very nice presentation. I mean, I've never seen a developer come that thoroughly prepared and looking at, I love it that you looked at the Anak, Anak, Anak plant, plan, that was developed by citizens of this community, not just the Planning Commission, not just the Council, but there were lots of citizens involved in that process, and, and from all parts of this community. So, there's lots of people and voices in that. So, I appreciate the echo of that, and I appreciate your time tonight. Thank you, Chair.
Yes, and I want to reiterate everything that they, they said as well. My only reservation was that, I know we did traffic studies, it just, it just seems that that road, if you put 850 cars on that every day, it just doesn't seem feasible to me, but I'm sure that the traffic study, it shows that we don't need lights, we don't need to widen the streets, but it just doesn't make sense to me. I wish we could have more thought and more design thought into that for public safety concerns. So, that's my only reservation. Thank you.
Commissioner Lovelace?
I would say, first of all, thank you for bringing your application here. I, I really, I know there's been a progression of this. You have presented, you've modified this plan as the months have gone on, and I like the three clubhouse's. I like the overparked, the overparking. This is the missing middle that we don't have. I would say, however, I concur with the other commissioners. I, I just don't think this is the right location for this development. I, I, like I said, I think the quality looks like it's there, and I think you should, if, if it does not go through city council, I think maybe consider a different piece of land to put something like this on, but I concur with my other commissioners, and I guess we are ready to get a motion on this.
Chair, may I just, one point of order. If, if there is a motion to approve, Stafford requests that motion to approve would include that the conditions be included from staff's presentation tonight, because we had a cleanup, just a confirmation clarifying that's Army Corps of Engineers for the jurisdictional wetlands with condition number two, and condition number four was the road improvements would include it in the traffic impact analysis. So, what you saw tonight in the presentation was, was the updated incorrect.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chairman, I move to recommend denial of application number PL 2025-098, Residential Preliminary Development Plan Pathways at Kensington Farms, 1231 Southwest Waterloo Drive, Petre Development applicant.
Second.
Can we get a vote, please?
Jake Lovelace?
No.
Ed Yarrington?
No.
Terry Trafton?
No.
Dana Arth?
Yes.
Jessica Grenow? Chip Tsuzinski?
Yes.
Randy Benbrook?
Yes.
Well, I think there has been some confusion about which way to vote on this. Can we get another roll call vote on that, please?
Of course.
Clarification, yes would be for denial, correct.
Correct, correct.
Jake Lovelace?
No.
Ed Yarrington?
Yes.
Terry Trafton?
Yes.
Dana Arth?
Yes.
Jessica Grenow?
Yes.
Chip Tsuzinski?
Yes.
Randy Benbrook?
Yes.
Well, this motion has been recommended for denial. It will go through to city council. As, as citizens of the community, make sure you show up at that meeting as well and let your voice be heard, and we will move on to roundtable.
Madam Chairman? I just want to say to the people that came, thank you for taking your night to just be part of the process, because if we don't hear you, we can't help advocate for you. But again, to the, to the applicant, this was a good proposal, it's just not here. So, thank you for coming. Thank you for thinking about our city, and, and please try to work with the city staff, work with, even with our elected officials, and see if a fine place to put this. So, thank you all.
Can we still remind the audience that we're still in session tonight, and we're still in a meeting?
If you could leave quietly.
Thank you.
So, we can continue our meeting.
I have a question for staff.
Okay.
I don't know if staff have information for us, but are there data centers in Lee Summit?
Not currently.
Yeah, I didn't think so.
Was there a question I could help dispel?
I don't think so.
No, I just wanted to, I didn't think we had any. This question came to me.
We have one.
As, from a citizen, and I was like, I don't know.
The Sprint, I think the Sprint building is one.
The Sprint building, the one over at UCM or Summit Technology Campus?
Summit Technology.
Oh, there's a data center over there. Okay, yeah.
Yes.
So, that's the only, but that one's been there for years. Yeah.
Question about water or energy?
No, no, no. It was just, do we have any? And then I was like, I don't think so. And then the other question was, are there any planned data center developments in Lee Summit? There are?
Commissioner Grono wanted to say something.
Oh, okay. There's no official, we have no official applications or whatever?
There's nothing.
Nothing in the development office?
Officially headed your way now that I can think of.
Okay. All right, great. Thank you for that. I appreciate it.
Does staff have anything to add? Okay, then we are adjourned at 8:25 PM.